Good evening, everyone. My name is Andrew Connors, Mayor Titusville, here to call this regular meeting on December 10th, 2024, 6:30 to order. Can you please take a moment of silence for our invocation, please? Thank you, and now for the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Thank you very much. Looks like we have a quorum. City Clerk?
Would you like me to read the procedures?
Yes, please.
Yes, okay. Individuals wishing to speak on agenda items must complete a sign-up card prior to the item being introduced. Those wishing to speak on quasi-judicial public hearings must complete a sign-up card and sign the oath. Sign-up and oath cards are available on the table. Individuals wishing to speak on non-agenda items may do so under petitions from the public present. This opportunity is offered twice in the meeting, and individuals may speak at either the first or second petitions, but not both. No sign-up card is required. Citizens shall not comment on any issue more than once during the meeting. All comments except petitions or requests must address pending issues, and citizens will be given three minutes to speak on all items. Citizens wishing to speak on the consent agenda must submit a sign-up card identifying the items of interest. Each speaker shall be limited to three minutes to speak on the entire consent agenda. All sign-up cards and exhibits being submitted to City Council shall be placed in the box on the table.
Thank you very much, City Clerk. City Attorney, can you please read the rules of council?
Well, again, there are many rules of council, but there's three rules you'd ask me to read, and I'll certainly do that.
Thank you.
Under rules of council, Rule Number Three, the mayor shall preserve order and decorum and take appropriate action to carry out this duty. The council shall appoint all committees unless otherwise provided for by ordinance, and the mayor shall appoint the chairman of each committee. Rule Five E is decorum. The purpose of the City Council meeting is to discuss city business, and proper decorum must be displayed by all in attendance. Public input and participation is encouraged. However, all persons in attendance shall comply with the rules for meeting procedures and shall refrain from any action that disrupts the orderly proceedings of the council meeting or hinders the council from performing its duties. No person shall interfere with the rights of others to speak, hear, see, or attend the proceedings, make threats of violence, disrupt the proceedings with shouting, fail to confine remarks to the agenda item under consideration, nor continue to speak after the allotted speaking time has expired, as these actions shall be considered disruptive and disorderly. The mayor shall caution any person who violates these provisions and disrupts the orderly proceeding of the council meetings, and they shall be directed to comply. Any person who fails to comply as cautioned shall be ruled out of order, shall forfeit the remainder of their speaking time on the agenda item under consideration, and will be requested to return to their seat. Persons who fail to comply as directed shall be subject to removal from the council chambers by law enforcement or such other actions as may be reasonably necessary to enforce these regulations. Notwithstanding, the mayor may order the immediate removal of any person from the chamber who poses a threat to property or life safety. Nothing in this section shall be construed to limit or restrict a person's rights created by the Constitution, law, ordinance, or regulation. And Rule 11, no member while the council is in session shall offer any motion or make any remark or speak on any subject under discussion without first addressing them being recognized by the chair. When more than one member shall rise at or near the same time, the mayor shall decide in favor of that one who shall first attract his attention, and no member shall interrupt others while speaking except to call him to order. Is there any other rules that you would like?
Nope. Thank you, City Attorney. Now...
May I?
Member Nelson?
Thank you. I would move to move up 11A, which is the Riverfront Park sign, to after Boards and Commissions, which is number six. Basically, it's short, and the people that are interested have been here fairly late at night on several different occasions, so it just seems appropriate to allow them to go first at this point.
I have a motion.
Second.
I have a motion by Member Nelson. I have a second by Vice Mayor Cole. Any discussion? All right, can I have a vote, please, City Clerk?
Member Moscosa?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Mayor Connors?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Cole?
Yes.
Motion approved. All right, before we get to that, I apologize, but I wanted to kind of stop you. Can I have a motion to approve the previous City Council meeting minutes?
I didn't see...
There are none.
Any.
Oh. Oh, okay. My bad. It was on my agenda to-do list, but... All right, let's get into old business, shall we? Didn't we do that?
That was just a motion to move that to right after six or right before six Boards and Commissions, so right now we're on special recognitions and presentations.
All right. Before... You're saying before Boards and Commissions?
No, yeah, before Boards and Commission.
Okay. The actual motion was for after Boards and Commission.
Oh, sorry. We should do it after Boards.
All right. So the motion was after Boards and Commissions. Okay. Then I guess that's where it'll be. We'll wait on that. City Manager?
Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and City Council. We have no... We do have special recognition and presentations. The first one is Item 5A, which is PFAM LLC will provide the city's portfolio presentation for FY 2024, no actions required. Ms. Leslie Weber will be your presenter. Leslie?
Good evening. Okay, perfect. So this evening, I'll be giving you an update on a brief market update and also an update of your portfolio. So my name is Leslie Weber. I'm with PFAM Asset Management, and we manage the city's public funds in addition to the OPEB, but tonight I'll be focusing on more of the shorter end of the portfolio. And I'll kick us off with a few of the current market themes. Now, by the time you receive this, some of this news is already stale, so I'm going to bring you up to speed as well, but I wanted to give you an overall picture of quarter three, because that's going to affect how your portfolio has performed for the third quarter. So focusing on broader themes of the U.S. economy during the third quarter here, the U.S. economy continues to remain resilient. That's been very supported by personal consumption, so if we think about us, the U.S. consumer, we are continuously driving that strong economy there and help supporting that soft landing type of narrative that the Fed's been wanting to do there. If we focus on the Fed, their dual mandate is keeping unemployment low, keeping inflation stable. Now, in terms of inflation, we have seen the trend coming lower, back in line with the Fed's 2% target. I do want to mention that if we think about the components of inflation, there's a good part that includes shelter. So we think leases and rents and things like that, and if we think about the length of those, that's about 12 months, 18 months, 24 months, and that's going to take a bit of time to roll over and have that inflation come back down over time. If we think about the other dual mandate of the Fed of keeping unemployment low, just to bring you up to speed, the job market continues to cool, so it is still strong. If we think about October, the jobs came in at 12,000. Now, that was expected because of the hurricanes that happened. About 1.4 million people were reported to be out of the labor market at that time, but we did get a reading in November this past Friday, and it was overestimated at 227,000 jobs. Unemployment came in at 4.2%. That is also the Fed's long-term goal there as well. So labor market's cooling, but still strong. Inflation is trending back down. If we think about the Fed and their monetary policy, they started cutting rates at their September meeting. They did a 50-basis-point cut, and it wasn't because they felt a recession was looming, it was more they felt confident that inflation was coming back down, and they have a better balance of their dual mandate with the labor market and that inflation. And if we fast forward, at their November meeting, they cut an additional 25 basis points. There also is a good likelihood that at their December meeting, which takes place between December 17th to the 18th, probably another additional cut, especially with the jobs number that came out. They still feel that the labor market's strong. There is another inflation reading for them. Now, I will mention with the Fed, they are very data-dependent. They're in no rush to cut rates, and if we think about what's looming upon the economy, especially with the new administration coming into play in January, there's a lot of fiscal policy that's been talked about. So if we think about taxes, tariffs, immigration, and regulation, that's going to affect the economy once those items are enacted. So if we move down to yields, as an investor, right, we like the higher yields, because that means more income for the city. So during the third quarter, what happened was the markets dropped. They dropped almost across the board because they were more in line with what the Fed was projecting in terms of interest rates. And if we think about the yield curve here, the front end of the curve drops. So as the Fed starts cutting rates, the shorter end of that yield curve is going to be in tandem with the Fed. If we think about two years and longer, that reflects more investor sentiment and economic outlook. Now, I will say, if I bring you forward to about a couple days ago, yields have risen across the board there, two to 10-year, so the yield curve is a little bit flat there. So how does this all tie to the city's portfolio? And sorry if I give anyone a headache, I'm going to move ahead here to the portfolio. So starting off with the account summary, we like to do this every quarter, where what we do is we plot every sector that's invested in the portfolio against the investment policy maximum. So this one focuses on the actual sectors and the allocations, and you could see across the board that we're well in line with the investment policy. If we go on the next slide, this is the same concept, but with your maximum maturity limits. You could see across the board with the different sectors as well, you're all in line with that five-year maximum maturity limit. So a quick overview of the portfolio here, there's about 52 million being invested in a one-to-three-year strategy, so that means an average of all the securities that you hold matures between one and three years. At PFAM Asset Management, we are an active manager, so that means if there's, let's say, some value added that we think could be additive to your portfolio, we're going to buy it, or if we think that's something we could sell that's lower yielding, we're going to sell it out of the portfolio, picking up some sort of security that's going to be value-added there. And if we think about the difference between yield at cost and yield at market, your yield at cost there is higher than yield at market, because the market rates have dropped during that time, during the third quarter. And another item that I'll point out with the portfolio is looking at the portfolio credit quality, very high quality with an average of double A. If we think about the U.S. government, they're double A+, so you're just slightly one notch below that, so very high-quality type of security instruments in your portfolio. A few notes that I'll mention in the sector allocation in the upper right-hand quadrant there, all well diversified across the board. You'll notice a good amount is invested in U.S. Treasuries. When we think about public funds, we think about those objectives of safety, liquidity, and then yield. If we think about the U.S. Treasury, it's very liquid. Liquid in a sense where we could sell it in the marketplace and be able to turn that into cashewery pretty quickly, so that's why we have a good portion there for the city. And I'll talk a bit about performance here. So if we look at the portfolio performance, very good quarter for the third quarter, and if we even look out a year, good, strong performance there. We're able to beat the benchmark, so we selected, since we are managing to a one-to-three-year, the benchmarks of one-to-three-year Treasury, and that speaks to the markets decreasing in rates, so that helped with performance, because that means market values were up. And if we think about what you're able to invest in, that has really helped you there as well. Having a well-diversified investment policy has really helped, you know, buy other things than U.S. Treasuries that are a bit higher yielding. And if we focus on an accrual basis earnings here, so meaningful dollars for the city, quarter three, 2024, about 618,000 there, and about one year, I'm sorry, I cannot really see that, I think it's about 1.5 million for the year, so these are meaningful dollars for the city. Are there any questions?
Seeing none, thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Next presentation will be the Titusville Farmington LLC FY 2025 budget and FY 26 pro forma projections, and Mr. Ball and Kevin are here to provide you the presentation.
Good evening. Here on behalf of Public Works, and I have Mr. Ball here helping me, he's our member that represents the city on the Tifa management board. Just going to go over, Tifa is the public-private partnership between the city of Titusville and the Miami Corporation to supply raw water to the city. We are the sole user of that water currently. Mr. Ball is our representative on the management committee, and Mr. Lee is the Miami Corp representative on the committee. And just to note, they approved this budget that is including the consent agenda on November 21st of this year to be brought before the city council. Just a brief history of the Tifa background, how we ended up in a public-private partnership going back to 1999. I'm not going to go through each bullet, but the city had been working to get a new source of water, and we've ended with this partnership that created Air Four, which is a good partnership for the city, provides us with 2.75 million gallons a day of raw water to be treated by our plant in this joint partnership. So to give you an idea of how much water we've gotten from Tifa in the last 12 months, little over 62% of all our water usage has come from the supply at Tifa on the raw water side, little over a billion gallons last year. We used about 1.6 billion throughout the city. The remaining 614 million came out of Air Two and Air Three wellfields. Translate that into our finished water supply, city Titusville produce 98% of our water. We did purchase a little less than 28 million gallons from the city of Cocoa. As you know, we have a standing agreement with Cocoa, we do have a three-month, 3 million gallons per month usage, whether we use it or not, so we do try to use them to supplement our storage on the south end. We include the budget in the consent package today, but to give you a little idea, we do have ongoing maintenance on the access roads that service the wellfields that Farmington does on behalf of Tifa. We do have cost drivers and insurance and FPL in general supplying power to the wellfield. We do have some new initiatives that are the result of the rate increase that you'll see, as the city has asked to replace the variable drives on the first-phase wells, so we have those budgeted for replacement. We're also replacing the entire PLCs for all the SCADA hardware through all the wells and adding one additional backup unit. They'll be done, built in-house, and we'll be providing the labor for that. We're also bringing on board, Tifa as a group has now hired an electrical contractor to start preventive maintenance in the wellfields. As the wells are aging, they need preventative maintenance on a regular basis, so that's a new initiative that Tifa currently has. Given your rate projections and rate history, we do alter this rate annually to kind of match what we have spending on utilities and O&amp;M needs. Current year, we were $1.15 per thousand gallons, we'll be going up to $1.29 to account for the new initiatives, and based upon the rate projections, they'll go back down next year to $1.19. To give you an idea of what impact that has on the city itself, we do get paid back for our O&amp;M efforts by our staff in the wellfield. We maintain the wells through monthly testing and so forth, and we're reimbursed on a work order basis, which amounts to less than $60,000. We also, as being part of this public-private partnership, we have a member disbursement where we project to get about $415,000 back through the partnership next year. So if we take out the amount we are funding for water purchases, about 1.3 million, our net cost for this system is $820,000, and the effective rate drops to $82 per thousand. Put that in perspective, our base rate on our water supplier right now is around $4 per thousand for supplying out-finished. And we happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Member Moscosa?
I just have a general question. With the last presentation and with this presentation, they were not included in our original agenda, so they're just now popping up, so it makes it quite difficult to have any questions, because this is the first time that I'm seeing this information. So I'm not sure when you submitted this presentation to the city, but I think if possible, if we could have that city manager in advance, and I know I mentioned that to you during our meeting today, it would help us to be a little bit more prepared for this meeting. Thank you.
All right, seeing none, thank you very much.
On to Boards and Commissions. Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion, because at our last City Council meeting, Councilwoman Stokel stated that she would probably not be at this meeting, and she would like us to delay that until our first council meeting in January.
Are you making a motion?
Yes. A motion to move Boards and Commissions approvals onto our first meeting in January.
Which is January 14th at 6:30.
Yes.
I would second that.
Could I ask for clarification? There are three agenda items under Boards and Commissions, A, B, and C. A is Board of Trustees of the General Employees Pension Plan. B is the environmental and environmental commission appointments. And C is to accept a resignation of Kristen Smith Rodriguez for BAA. So if we could clarify in your motion which of these items you're seeking to table, and whether you want to proceed with accepting the resignation and C.
Can I have a motion to table 6A and B until the next regular City Council meeting, please?
So moved.
Could I also ask if part of that motion is to ensure that the members that are currently serving will continue to serve until that time?
And that the members...
In the event that their term would end.
And that the members continue to serve. I think one of the problems for me, and I'm not sure about Vice Mayor Cole, but I'm assuming so, is that we had some very long discussions about the issues related to board appointments and why we did certain things. I think it would be helpful to have Member Stokel here, so that's my motion.
So I have a motion from...
Second.
I have a motion and I have a second. Can I have a roll call vote, please, City Clerk?
Yes, sir. Member Nelson?
Yes.
Mayor Connors?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Cole?
Yes.
Member Moscosa?
Yes.
Motion carries. Items 6A and B have been tabled to our next meeting. Onto 6C.
Onto 6C, which is Board of Adjustments and Appeals. This is to accept the resignation of regular member Kristen Smith Rodriguez from the Board of Adjustment and Appeals, and the resignation is effective 31 December 2024.
Member Nelson?
If we don't have any cards on it, I would like to make a motion to accept her resignation.
We have cards.
We do.
Yes. Tony Shifflow?
Tony Shifflow, Historic Norwood House. Forgive me, Member Nelson, but I did put a card in on this, because I wanted to speak praise of Ms. Smith Rodriguez, and I'm going to just say, well, congratulations are in order for Ms. Smith Rodriguez. It is with tribulation that I see her leave the Board of Adjustments and Appeals. The first meeting of this board that I attended, I was impressed by the depth of her research into an issue before them, and the pertinence of her questions of the applicant, and the knowledge of zoning and land use regulations that she commands. She reminds me of Member Moscosa when she was on the Planning and Zoning Committee, but since that meeting, I observed Ms. Smith Rodriguez on her action on the Board of Adjustments and Variances, and although sometimes I didn't agree with her decisions, I always appreciated her process of arrival at those decisions. She was very thorough. Filling her position will stretch your recruiting skills, and applicants should be well-vetted for that position. And while it has been a challenge to speak before Ms. Smith Rodriguez, she sat right there, on the Board of Appeals and Adjustments and Variances, she always made one feel more at ease with her kind, yet authoritative manner. She was very firm. Even so, even though she was kind about it, I hope to never stand before her in her new job.
I would...
Thank you, Ms. Tony.
Echo that. Ms. Tony, she's... I did everything in my power to talk her into staying. Yeah, did work. So I would move to accept the resignation of Kristen Rodriguez Smith of the Board of Adjustments and Appeals, effective the 31st of this year, with regrets. I think she's served the city well, and I'm sure that she will be equally firm as a judge.
I second.
Thank you, Member Nelson. I have a motion by Member Nelson. I have a second by Member Moscosa. Can I have a roll call vote, please?
Yes. Mayor Connors?
Yep.
Vice Mayor Cole?
Yes.
Member Moscosa?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Thank you.
Andrew, do you want to let these people that came for the boards leave?
I mean, all right, so just as a general announcement, we... I mean, all right, so just as a general announcement, we tabled the Boards and Commissions. So if you guys were here for that and that's it, I mean, you guys are free to go. That's what Member Nelson wanted me to convey to everybody. We apologize, but we're going to wait till we're at full strength to have those conversations. Now, I believe there was a motion and a second.
Correct. We're on, on to 11A, which is the Riverfront Park signage. At the June 11th, 2024 city council meeting, council approved the naming of Riverfront Park and requested informational signs about the Riverfront Acquisition Referendum be presented at a future city council meeting for council's review and consideration of the location and the signage. Attached are renderings of two signs that staff is recommending be placed at Riverfront Park. Sign number one is an informational sign about Riverfront Referendum that will be placed near the observation pier inside the park. Sign two is the park's name, which will be placed close to the entranceway of the park. Staff is requesting direction as to the content and placement of these signs.
All righty. Member Nelson? I do have a question. I was trying to determine which sign is going where and I was hoping you guys could help me out.
So the one that, the black one that just says the name, that'll go kind of at the entrance, close to US One, just to kind of, as you're passing by, you see the name. This informational one will go near the observation pier.
Okay. The one with the information on it?
With all the words, yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Got it. Thank you.
Any cards?
We have Laura Ward.
Hi, Ms. Laura. It's great to see you.
Nice to see you, Mayor. Laurel Ward, River Edge Drive. I want to thank the previous council for getting the name right finally, and I want to thank this council for approving the sign, hopefully. I was real pleased to see that we had a park name identification sign near the road and near the entrance where, as you're driving by, you can see the name of the park. And I hope it's two-sided or something, maybe so you can see it if you're southbound? Not sure. Okay. And one more question. How big is that sign?
The one on the road?
Yes, seriously.
No, I think it's 24 by 24. So it's, it's, or is it 36? 36 by 36.
So it's big enough to see in a car?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, thank you very much and I do appreciate it.
Thank you, Ms. Laura.
Next card is Tony Shifflow.
I know you think I'm the new Stan Johnston. Tony Shifflow, the Historic Norwood House. But I worked with Ms. Ward on this project and I'm extremely pleased at the information sign and I wanted to step up and say thank you to whomever, who gets the credit for the write-up because you got the story there and that's so important because Ms. Ward has struggled for years in getting the name proper, the proper name of this area recognized. And while I'm very, extremely pleased about that sign and thankful that the former council, you're the council, that the former council voted to get this done and that you're, you're certainly going to approve the placing of the signs, I would like to suggest that the name sign be a little more attractive than just black and white, that perhaps it could match some of the other park signs or something. The size is fine, but the design is not so, so innovative. And, and we have such innovative signs all around town now with the new Titusville thing. Anyway, I'm just so extremely pleased and I want the citizens of Titusville to know and recognize the work that that group of citizens did to procure and save any inches of our riverfront. And I want to encourage this council and all our boards to work towards saving as much of the undeveloped riverfront as we can as, as space. I know it's like juggling. Everybody used to say, oh, I'm sitting in the back row, I can't see the juggling act. I was a professional juggler. And I said, if I'm good, once the show gets started, it's all up in the air. And that's the same thing with space. If the launches are good, it's all going to be up in the air, but it's still nice for people to have a riverfront place to sit and wait because sometimes they're delayed, they don't always go on schedule. So I want us to try and keep as much of the undeveloped riverfront undeveloped for everybody. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Shifflow. Staff? Any other cards? All right, so staff was looking for us to provide direction, so I'm looking at council and going, all right, does it look good to you guys?
Looks good to me. I think it looks good.
All right. Thank you, Member Nelson. Member Moscoso?
I would, I would agree with Tony. I love the write-up because it just shows the collaboration between the residents and the city and so great job with that.
All right, so I'm looking for a motion to approve the plan. You're not on, Ms. Jol...
Sorry about that. Move to approve that signs for Riverfront Park.
Second.
I have a motion and I have a second. Everybody agree, say aye, please. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Onto petitions and requests.
Kay St. Ange, Maryland Avenue. I live in the Grove Park subdivision directly west of Parish Medical Center and west of US One. The Titusville Assisted Living Facility is in the planning stages for 13 acres on US One north of Silver Star Road. The site plan calls for an exit from this facility onto Silver Star Road leading to US One, but it also calls for a gated emergency access onto Georgia Avenue and Grove Park. While I appreciate that once the project is complete, this access will be gated emergency access, my concern is that during construction, Georgia Avenue will be utilized by heavy construction vehicles. Last week, a documentation box was posted at the stubout where Georgia Avenue ends and the emergency access is to be located. This leads me to believe we can soon expect equipment to begin building a road into the property at this location. I am concerned construction vehicles on Georgia Avenue will create a dangerous situation. Georgia Avenue is a very narrow local road. When vehicles park on both sides of the road, there's barely room to drive through. Sometimes a semi truck parks illegally on Georgia Avenue, taking up most of the road. Several children live on this road and adjacent roads in Grove Park. They use Georgia Avenue to ride their bikes to school. As well as, I am concerned that heavy vehicles will damage Georgia Avenue and Old Dixie Highway, which it leads to. Old Dixie Highway has no sidewalks, no shoulders and no drainage. Additional traffic onto Old Dixie will cause dangerous situation to bicyclists and pedestrians. I see no reason why Georgia Avenue and Old Dixie should be utilized for construction traffic when the facility has another access onto Silver Star Road, which leads directly to US One. As of yesterday, no documentation box was installed at the access onto Silver Star Road. Why is there no documentation box at Silver Star when there's one at Georgia Avenue? Please give this situation your due consideration and ask the developer to restrict construction vehicles onto local road, Georgia Avenue and Grove Park subdivision. Thank you. Any questions?
Member Moscoso?
I do have a question for Mr. Parish. Do we know that they are going to be using that road to access the property for construction?
I do not know that because we have not had a pre-construction meeting with them yet. They have an approved site plan, but they still have not issued a permit.
But would they have access to use that road?
That's possible.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Ron Swink and I live on Georgia Avenue. I'm speaking about the Titusville Assisted Living Facility also, about the access through Georgia Avenue. I'm not speaking against the, the project plan itself. I understand where it's going and it looks, it looks pretty good. My concern is the construction aspect of it. As Kay had mentioned just a few minutes ago, we do have a lot of children living in the neighborhood, riding their bikes around. My concern is for the safety for them and also with the size of facility that are going to be building, it's quite a bit of construction stuff. If it all comes through Georgia, it's going to adversely affect the roadway for the neighborhood, wear it out prematurely and, and such as that. I would like to also ask that staff, when they do talk to them, talk about hours of operation if they, if this is going forward, that there be some adequate hours of operation to go through there so that kids can get to school safely and, and back home safely. So that's, that's basically what I have to say. If there are any questions, I'll try to answer.
I, I have a question for the general audience. Is there anybody else here to talk about the same issue? All right. Thank you. All right. Can I have a motion from somebody to direct staff to tell the developer not to use that road, please?
So moved. Actually, I was going to ask Mr. Parish if, when we're issuing the permit, I think the hours are of concern because obviously you don't want heavy equipment going by your house at six o'clock in the morning. But also the wear and tear on that road. We're maintaining it and so we would like to see them not use that road and that there be specific hours. Can we do that?
We can ask them about it. I'm not sure we can put a condition, or the city council could put a condition on, on administrative approval.
Strongly encourage.
We can do that.
Strongly encourage would be good. Please. That's a motion.
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Motion passes. Would you still like to speak?
Good evening. My name is Jeremy Bo Rushing. I live on 2310 Georgia Avenue for the last 14 years and I'm here to speak on my behalf, my family's behalf, and the other 30 kids in the neighborhood. I don't think I need to say their names, but the kids ride their bikes up and down the street every day after school. On the weekends, all the kids are at my house, not all 30 of them, but a lot of them. And we just, we don't, we don't want equipment and heavy equipment and dump trucks and all that kind of stuff coming down our street. It's already busy enough and we have a problem with people speeding down there all the time. So you guys do what you do. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Dwight Severs, thank you for the opportunity to speak. I appreciate your motion, but I, I think I can provide you additional background information on this. Certainly staff represented to the citizens that I was at the Planning and Zoning Commission on September 20th, 2023, that Georgia Avenue was going to be utilized as the construction entrance. We have never heard to the contrary. There were several citizens more than a year ago, appeared at that meeting and objected not only it was going to be an open street initially, but that it was going to be used as the construction entrance. And you look at the minutes, you will see it for yourself in the minutes. We appeared because of a section of the Code of Ordinances that says any opening of a new street or extension of a street, doesn't say public or private, you have to appear before the Planning and Zoning Commission and the city council. That's Section 31-31 of the Code of Ordinances. In addition, I have included, just for your information, a sketch of the area and some photographs. You can see where the ALF is located. I marked it on Exhibit B. You can see where Silver Star Road is. You can see where Georgia Avenue is. There is Buffalo Road and I included a photograph. If the concern by the developer and staff is the grade at Silver Star Road, you can easily use Buffalo Road, which is Exhibit C, which is completely flat. Why there is even conversation about using a residential public street for a commercial project, they can go through an M1 industrial district. It's real simple. The other concern I have, and I'll show you Exhibit D. That's the photographs. Mr. Broom certainly knows this, staff certainly knows that. A year, two years ago, after the COO has issued this gate, which is supposed to be a gate, shut, only operated by emergency vehicles, has never been closed at the River Palms Apartments. If we're going to call, I have concerns that is the way it may end up on Georgia Avenue. I own a house there. My parents bought it in 1981. We have continuously owned a house there. And I would appreciate you directing the city manager to report back to you on this issue, but it shouldn't be that complicated because there's easy access through an industrial district for that purpose. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Severs. Member Nelson?
So Dwight, this is for you and Mr. Broom. Do we have anything in our Code of Ordinances that stops commercial, industrial vehicles through going through neighborhoods? If I have a bulldozer, can I run right through?
I believe there are some codes that do, do say that.
Mr. Broom, do we have?
Certainly business and industrial going through residential.
To me, it's, it's a broader part problem than this particular area. I mean, it's a problem for this area, but it's a problem for everybody. Do we have anything that doesn't allow industrial equipment to travel through?
I don't have the code in front of me and, and I'd be guessing. I'm not aware of any codes that restrict the type of vehicle that can travel on a specific type of road. We'd be glad to look at that.
Could you, I would like you to check and report back to us. I would like to know because, you know, we're going to have a lot of construction. We're having a lot of construction now and understand that periodically they may have to go through a neighborhood, but this is something where you're talking about, there's another way to do it. There's no reason for them to have to go through a residential area. They may end up damaging our roads, which we're all going to pay for. And so I, I would like to know what we have that disallows them from doing these things.
Thank you, Member Nelson. I will also piggyback on that a little bit and say, while you're researching whether we have any ordinances in place to restrict maybe certain sized vehicles on residential roads, if we don't, can you please start looking into drafting some of that and bring it back to us because I know this is an issue down Singleton when the semis tried to cut around Garden Street and I think it's hurting our, our residential roads faster, you know, and it seems to be a common concern in those neighborhoods as well.
So, well, I'm making your endowment motion for advisability.
Member Nelson?
I would agree. I think that's why in our comp plan for multifamily developments and AFL will definitely be a higher density, they are not allowed to go out on a local road, which Georgia Avenue is a local road. And so I think that that is something we need to remember. It is in our comprehensive plan and so maybe we need to beef up a few other things to make sure, but like Member Nelson said, this is going to be an issue that's happening around town. So I would appreciate if we look into it. Thank you.
Member Nelson?
So my motion would be for staff to provide us with advisability to restrict heavy vehicle equipment access to residential areas. Does that work?
We can certainly look at it. Of course, you're going to have issues with moving trucks and delivery trucks. We can certainly look at it. Of course, you're going to have issues with moving trucks and delivery trucks.
Right.
You know, that's what you're going to come up against.
Okay.
Yeah, my question would be, I understand moving trucks and delivery trucks, but how about construction vehicles? Is it possible to say restrict that if the construction is going on in that specific area, whatever that area may be?
We'll look at all that. But of course, you're going to look at, you know, you're constructing single-family homes in those areas as well. So are they going to have no construction trucks that are going to be constructing single-family homes?
Yeah.
So it's a big issue that.
The motion was advisability. Is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion. I have a second. All agree, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, staff.
I just wanted to make a comment on that, that there are a lot of cities in the United States that do have weight restrictions on roads, and that might be a direction that you could look is weight restrictions. Being a pass truck driver, I've had to adhere to a lot of these weight restrictions, so that might be a direction you can go.
Absolutely. Thank you. Okay. Can you give your name for the record, please?
My name is Jackson Alexander Catalina, and I live on 2310 Georgia Avenue with my dad and my family over there. And I am one of the kids in Georgia Avenue, and I would like, I speak against, I speak against it. And when the kids are riding our bikes around the neighborhoods, it can, the delivery equipment and stuff is, might cause wrecks and dangerous things.
You're right. You're very right. You did a great job.
Thank you.
Thank you for sharing with us.
Hard to follow that. Elizabeth Baker, Augustine Drive. I know how much you guys love to hear about the right to clean water. So once again, I'm here and I am asking again to please amend our charter to reflect the will of the people. And in thinking about that in the last few days, it kind of had me going back over the course of events over the last several years, and I was thinking about the sewage spill in Sandpoint Park. And the pipe that went under the pond that bursted and allowed 7 million gallons of sewage to go into the lagoon. And I remembered that at one time, there was acknowledgement that we didn't know who put that pipe in, that there were no records. So I really wonder, because I know that there's been a few incidences after that that I've heard where records have been missing, whether it was negligence in handling them, or something got lost, or whether something was really kind of nefarious. I don't know. But what do we do when records are missing? I really just don't know. Anybody? Nope. No, nothing on missing records.
I'm going to let her finish.
Go ahead, please. Please.
I think that's a valid question, and I'll ask, because I did ask about a record, about the sewage spill and about the, I think Member Nelson has alluded to that DEP has told us that we needed to turn off the fountains and turn on the fountains.
This is my understanding and.
Oh, keep them on. I'm sorry.
Keep them on because the air is destroying the bacteria, and they wanted the bacteria gone.
And we also put bubblers in the ponds as well.
Yep. So I did ask for those records. I haven't been able to receive them as well. So I do have some of the same concerns as you, and I would like to know what do we do when those records are not, we've requested them and we're not given them?
I don't think there are records of that. We talked to the EPA daily during the event, and that guidance was given verbally to our staff.
So there's no record even of the verbal agreement? No. Is that common practice?
We, you know, we don't record phone calls, so.
So if records are missing, we just suck it up and take it?
There's no record.
Well, not just that. I'm not just talking about that. I mean, that was a completely separate incident. I'm talking about, I was specifically talking about the pipe in Sandpoint Park, so I don't know.
I believe staff gave council a presentation after the event, and we did say the company that installed the pipes.
I think we know the company that installed the pipes. I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Please wait. Thank you. I'll just remind all council members, please wait to be acknowledged. So we don't want people talking over each other. Like to run an efficient meeting, please. If you would like to be next, please raise your hand, so I know, so we know, so we're not running up there and trampling each other. Thank you. Yep, come on. I just didn't want to see poor Bill trip and getting up here.
Are you going to talk for me? Good evening. My name is Kathy Turner, and I am the Director at Children's Montessori Academy, located on Armstrong Drive in Titusville. I am, the school's been there for 30 years. It goes from infants to second grade. It has a CUP, conditional use permit, because it's a childcare and industrial area. I'm trying to request to be able to get a private school listed, so I can accept scholarships from all the families that are with me tonight, because I can't accept them unless I get that private school listed. But because I'm in a jurisdiction that doesn't allow private schools, they won't let me have it. So I'm requesting that. You know, like update my CUP to include private school for the kindergarten and first graders or?
City manager, can you answer that question?
This is the first time I've heard about this. So this is a CUP that you have for daycare, and you're trying to get a private school?
So yes, it's for the center. It's a Montessori school that goes up to second grade.
I could certainly speak with you after the meeting, or tomorrow, we can meet in our offices and talk about your.
Yeah, that would be great. They had mentioned for me to come here. I talked to Lori and Ms. Armstrong, and they had told me to come to the meeting, so.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Staff will help you out. Thank you. I don't see anybody else running up there.
I'm Bill Klein, 3 Indian River Avenue, Titusville, Florida. I too have a very serious concern about records that aren't kept or else lost, or maybe even destroyed. Somewhere around 1996, there was a tree mitigation fund organized that had, or amounts of money that had to be deposited by developers if they didn't plant trees or save certain amounts of trees. There are no records of monies collected. There's no records of monies spent. There's some money in the fund. Now, somewhere around, I think, 2001, this fund was changed to allow landscaping uses and not plant trees. Originally, it was only for planting trees. But in 2001, the city council decided to make it a landscaping fund. However, there are no records. There's no records from 2001. There's no records from 1996. Not even of today. The records go. There's no list of at the end of the year. No records of how much money was deposited, no records of how much money was spent. And I don't even think there are records of trees being planted. And now, this money is being turned over to pay for landscaping around the gateway. Not planting any trees to mitigate the damage that was done by the developers since 1996. The money disappeared. It's gone, and nobody knows where it is. I have written many letters and emails to the city asking for those records, and I have emails from the city saying they don't exist. I can send you copies if you wish. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Klein.
Good evening, everyone. I'm hoping you all get a look at that paper, and you're welcome to keep that. Somebody within, I'll say, local government was nice enough to get me that paper. Quality of life was brought up the last meeting I attended, that same exact phrase, quality of life. I said this about the excessively loud F-150 truck issue seven meetings ago. Clean, safe drinking water is also a quality of life issue. Newspapers thrown left to rot is also a quality of life issue. Trash cans that cannot be timely removed from the street is also a quality of life issue. If you are sincere, why do you fail to act on behalf of the citizens you represent? Do you have the integrity to please do this? If you are sincere about raising revenue and not property taxes, and sincere about quality of life, how come you don't daily enforce speeding laws? Go out on Garden Street. You could make a fortune on Garden Street any day of the week. How come you don't find the company throwing the newspapers everywhere? How come you don't find the people too lazy to pick up those papers and move their trash cans? I was able to move my trash cans on a walker and later with crutches, so I don't see any excuse for this. I don't think code enforcement should have to go move lazy people's trash cans. And the hanger thing on the door, that's not working. How many hangers do you have to put on somebody's door before you do something about the eyesore? I have also been unfortunately repeatedly lied to by city personnel, and also told by several people in Titusville to quote, "be careful," unquote, and quote, "watch what you say." Anyone with common sense, a health outlook, and/or a military background knows the seriousness of sleep deprivation, which myself and another neighbor have been going through since February due to this loud truck issue.
Thank you, Mr. Red.
To be continued, I guess.
All right. Seeing none. Kind of a, oh.
Good evening, guys. Aaron Fason, 530 Locksley. I just rushed here from Orlando for an issue that happened to me yesterday. I think it's very imperative that when people are applying to sit on a board, that their references are kept anonymous. You see, I received a phone call yesterday for someone portraying to be checking references on one of my defunct companies. I don't like that. I don't like that I received a phone call saying, "I'm calling to check on a reference, but I really want to know about your old company that is inactive." And yes, I know it's inactive. So I would like the city to look into trying to protect the references of people sitting on a board. You see, I'm not an approving authority. You are. If they want to investigate somebody, investigate their approving authorities, but not the references. Some of these people's references may be their mother, their cousins, their aunts or uncles, a coworker, a boss, a clergy member. They shouldn't be receiving phone calls from a concerned citizen doing reference checks. That citizen is in the room here today. I will not acknowledge who she is, but she's here in the room today. Hence the reason why I rushed from Orlando to be present today, to let you guys know that we need to protect the references of those who are applying for boards. Any questions?
I appreciate your concern. City attorney, is there anything we can do in regards to, you know, obviously, we have to publish a lot of stuff.
Once documents are provided to the city for city business, those would be public records. Public records are to be provided to the public upon request. As we just heard earlier, if people ask for public records, we are required to provide them. We can only redact information which the law allows us to redact. I do not know of any law that would allow us to redact references from those. The only thing I could suggest is, you know, to not include them. We can let you know whether or not there is an exemption, but we can only redact information the law allows us to redact from public records, or it would be a public record violation.
Well, listen, I have recommended many people throughout this community, whether I agree with you or not, to participate in the local proceedings here in this community. I believe that people ought to participate, okay? Because you don't have to agree with me. If you have a voice, if you have an opinion, I think you ought to be involved in the decisions of this community. I find it to be deplorable that I received that phone call yesterday. And I come to let you guys know, I'm very upset with that, okay? Thank you.
Thank you very much for shedding light on that.
Sorry, I just want to say thanks to Member Fason. I got to serve on the Planning and Zoning Commission. And I did get on Planning and Zoning because he walked me downstairs and showed me the opening for Planning and Zoning Commission. So because of him, I kind of ended up being up here, so thank you for doing that.
I'm Vicki Conklin. I'm representing 11,930 residents. And we're approaching the new year, and I'd like to issue a challenge to all of you, a resolution starting tonight, and that is to focus on the best decisions for Titusville. It's a nonpartisan position. I want to remind you of that, and ask you to work with the citizens and advisory boards based upon their qualifications and their proven dedication to our community, not upon political party or loyalist appointments, which has been the undercurrent for the past two weeks. So please focus on that. The second issue is water bills. It seems to be a big issue. I've requested a drive-up drop box for five years with no response from the city. The city raised their water and sewer rates. Now they're raising the cost of electronic payments and automatic payments. There's no consideration for the convenience of residents. Several residents have been charged late fees, and their bill was submitted on time electronically, but the cashier says, "We really want you to come in here to pay your bill." And so I think they are trying to preserve their jobs. I'm not sure. But I think we're keeping jobs at the expense of being considerate of our residents. In fact, an elderly woman fell on the city hall steps last week because she had to come here. Her bill was considered late for three months in a row, even though she paid it on time electronically. And she was told, "You have to come here in order to fix it." So she came here. She fell down the steps, and she broke her nose, and she broke her wrist. Is this the kind of thing that we're encouraging, or are we about a city to be convenient for our residents? I think that's what we should be about. So please get a drop box, ask the high school students to design and paint it, install the box. It works for the post office really well to have a drop box. Why can't it work for us? So please do that on behalf of residents. The third issue, I would ask the city manager, please, in the next year, to prioritize the videotaping and the recording of all meetings. The TEC now is every other meeting. BAA is every other meeting. How do we decide which meeting is important and which is not? And I think under goals and objectives and the strategic plan for the city, it calls for the city manager to be responsible for that, to be making sure every meeting is videotaped, so our residents at home don't have to come up the steps if they have a bum knee to be able to see the meetings. They can see them at home. We need to provide that, that we should be customer oriented.
Thank you.
She's a lot taller than I am. Liz Parker, between a circle. I come addressing a number of issues too. I guess I'll springboard right off of my buddy over there, because I have similar issues with different, similar topics, different issues. The first thing I addressed a few meetings ago was. The first thing I addressed a few meetings ago was bills being considered delinquent by the Water Department when they are mailed, in fact, on time, payment-wise. The city itself determines your delinquent bills are due when rendered and become delinquent if not paid within 15 days after the bill has been mailed, whether or not it's delivered to you. The city considers it delivered upon mailing. However, as a citizen, when you mail your check to pay your bill, the city does not consider it mailed or paid upon mailing. They wait until they process it, so for however long it may sit in the mail or however long it may sit in the peel box, you, as a citizen, are penalized. At this point in time, we have a class action, because citizens across the city are being charged to late fees and threatened with service cutoff because their bill is quote-unquote "late." That's issue number one. Number two, part of the reason for that is the water bills do not arrive on a consistent day each month. They might arrive due on the 26th, the 23rd, the 28th, the 25th, random dates. Every other bill I have comes due on the same day each month. I know, and I can apportion my money to make sure that I can cover that bill when it is due. With the city water bill, I cannot do that, because I don't know when it's going to arrive and when it's going to be due. I strongly recommend that the city review its procedures, both on how it processes payments and how it's billing its customers. We, the citizens, pay for the Water Department. We, the citizens, pay you. You are our servants. We should not be paying fees, because the city is inconsistent in how it performs. The second thing along that same line has to do with code enforcement. I live on Royal Oak Golf Course. It's an ISOR. It's a rat trap. And it has been that way for years. Code enforcement does no punishment. However, during the state of emergency after Hurricane Milton, excuse me, Milton came through, I was issued a violation within a few days of my tree being snapped in the tornado. I have a 60-foot tree in my yard that's damaged after two consecutive hurricanes. Finding somebody to take down that tree is no small feat. It's also very costly. May I continue?
Thank you. Sorry, I wanted to cut you off to be uniform, but can I have a motion to direct the city staff to amend their policy to accept water payments as the date they were postmarked?
Thank you.
Member Nelson?
I think we need advisability, because we need more information regarding the water bills and how they're being processed before we make that leap. So my, my motion would be to have maybe a presentation so that we understand how they're being processed, and that we go from there.
Well, I have a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Yes, I second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Mayor, I couldn't quite hear it. Clarify, the motion is for a presentation?
For a presentation.
Okay, I want to make sure we...
Yeah.
...understand what you're expecting.
I think we need to understand the procedure before we jump into it.
I'm more gung-ho and about to change stuff, so that's why I asked for the motion, but you guys have to make the motion, so... Member Muscosso?
I just want to say that, just to address your issues, thank you for bringing those up. I did speak to the city manager this morning and the city attorney about reviewing our procedures as well, so that's something we are talking about. And as for Royal Oak, I met with code enforcement last week, and I'm doing a ride-along this... I thought I was doing a ride-along last week, it ended up being a meeting. I'm doing a ride-along this week, and I'm in communication with him about that property. So these things are being discussed, at least on my end. I just want to let you know that.
Good evening. My name is Bob Barrows. I've lived in town for 20 years. I live at 3785 Sawgrass Drive, and I've lived all over the country as a military officer. And every three years, I moved, and I've never, ever been in a town that is so aggressive at turning off water without any, any opportunity to put in reasons that affect, that are out of my control. I've been hacked, and my ID's been stolen for 10 months, and there are times when I don't have any money. My bill this month is due on the 23rd, yet they're turning off my water on the 17th, because regrettably, I didn't have any money and I have a back payment. I don't understand the back payment part. Could you maybe soften that? And the Water Department says it all stems from the council. They do what you say. And you guys just seem to be, not you probably, it happened probably in someone else's administration, but it's a bit, a bit severe. At least you should leave some room for extenuating circumstances, such as the one I just outlined. Thank you.
I appreciate your comments, and I think that is very much a trend that our council's looking at, is all of our policies and procedures as we move forward. It's just, unfortunately, you can't address them all at the same time, but your concern is heard. Mr. Prez?
Good evening, Tom Perez. Washington Avenue. I wasn't going to say anything, but the topic certainly hits home. I recently found myself in the same exact situation. And when I got this letter, I mean, we're not talking about overdue for months, this is, you know, all of a sudden, I get overdue. And I checked my records, because I do online banking, and it had been submitted, considered, delivered. But the letter that I got, "We're shutting you down December 4th." You know, this is November. I'm saying, "What the heck?" You know? And so I went to the office, and I spoke with the manager there, Maria. She was very nice. And I went and produced my records. I even went to the bank, because she said, "Well, maybe they can give us a number, check number." Got the check number, brought it. That really did clear up the situation. So what I wound up doing initially was repay plus the $5 late fee, okay? So those records really don't mean much. They're still waiting for that check to bounce out of, I don't know, mail somewhere. I suspect it's probably maybe the post office, but I'm not sure. Considering how many people have the same problem, maybe that's a plausible possibility. Anyway, just wanted to add a little bit of kindling. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Prez. And maybe if it ever does arrive, there'll be some mercury on it as well. All right. Any other petitions or requests? Going once, going twice, sold. City Manager, before you get into it, can I have a motion to move new business up to right now, please?
I make a motion that we move new business up just before consent agenda.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
I want to clarify, having a hard time hearing.
Motion by Vice Mayor Cold, move new business up before...
New business items A and B?
Yep.
So for the public, in case they're not aware, it's...
Yep, I got you.
Business item A is Tranquility Phase III Sketch Plat and Huntington Park Final Plat.
Yep. And we have a second, and then universal passage. So new business, City Manager, please.
Onto item 12A, which is Tranquility Phase III Sketch Plat. Tranquility subdivision formerly Antigua Bay, Phase III, is a proposed 67-lot, single-family subdivision on 26.046 acres located north of State Road 405 and east of South Washington. This is the second phase of the overall project, which consists of approximately 345 acres. City Council approved the original development agreement with master plan for Antigua Bay in 2017. Master plan includes single-family home lots at the north end of the property, both multifamily and commercial zone property, recreational amenities such as public boardwalk and walking trails, and open space. On December 4th, 2024, the Planning and Zoning Commission made a motion to approve as presented with staff's recommendations of the condition, approve the sketch plat for Tranquility Shores Phase III, with the condition that the proposed trail over the Addison Canal connecting to Phase I subdivision be permitted with site construction of Phase III subdivision unless the applicant is unable to obtain the necessary permits from the applicable regulatory agencies. Evidence of the completed permit application filed with all the relevant permitting agencies and evidence of approval or denial shall be provided. And Planning and Zoning approved this 423. Brad's here. Go ahead.
Mayor, items A and B are quasi-judicial. At this time, I'd like to read the quasi-judicial rules of procedure.
Thank you.
During the public hearing portion of this meeting on these two quasi-judicial items under new business, anyone wishing to speak on this quasi-judicial items must first sign a public hearing agenda card and sign the oath contained thereon, swearing to tell the truth, the full truth, and nothing but the truth. These cards are located on the table at the entrance of the chamber and should be provided to the clerk. Those speaking in favor of requests will be heard first. If you have photographs, sketches, or documents that you desire for the city council to consider, they must be submitted into evidence and will be retained by the city. Please submit such exhibits to the city clerk. City clerk, have you resigned, have you received signed oath cards from persons wishing to speak before the city council, swearing to tell the truth, the full truth, and nothing but the truth? To staff and applicant, please ensure that all witnesses that intend to speak have signed an oath card and presented it to the clerk. If there's anyone present who has not signed an oath card that wishes to speak on a quasi-judicial item, please submit a card to the clerk at this time. City clerk, have all agenda items been properly advertised?
Yes.
Regarding ex parte communications, in the event that a council member has received an ex parte communication, either verbal or written, outside of this hearing, the council member shall disclose the identity of the person, group, or entity with whom the communication took place, and the subject of the communication, including all opinions or facts discussed. Any written communication must be disclosed and made a part of the record. Also, in the event that a member has conducted an investigation or site visit or received any expert opinions regarding the quasi-judicial items, said visitor opinions shall be disclosed. So at this time, be appropriate, with regard to item A, Tranquility, Phase III Sketch Plat, and the same will apply when we handle Huntington Park Final Plat, that you will need to disclose any of the ex parte communications, as we just discussed.
City Attorney, based on your definition, I have to disclose that I have been out to Tranquility. I was doing a ride-along with Fire Chief Estole, and he drove me out there. So I seen it.
So you did a site visit. Any opinions you need to disclose at this time?
Just wanted to let you know I was driven out there.
Any other disclosures?
Was out there a year ago? So, no.
Anything with regard to this Phase III Sketch Plat that you need to disclose? Any...
Yes, I also drove out maybe a year ago, but I do want to have it on the record. I did not receive any money from Tranquility. They, they invested heavily in our local elections, although not illegal. I find that concerning, and so I want to put that out there as well.
And staff is available to present to you. Brad Parrish.
Let's give you a short summary of what we have before you. A sketch plat is the first stage in order to get a subdivision approved. It requires a concept, basically about 30% of your drawings to be brought before you. It was first brought before Planning and Zoning Commission. They recommended approval with a condition, and now it's going to be brought before you for a decision. If this is approved, the next step is a site plan that the applicant will have to submit with a preliminary plat. That's an administrative process, and once that process is complete, they could receive a permit for construction. And once that is underway, then they can submit at some point a final plat to be submitted to you for final acceptance of any public infrastructure that needs to be associated with it. So you will see it again, but the time you see it again, it's going to be almost complete. So this is your opportunity to provide any comment or any review of this before it goes to the next stage, which is a site plan. The, as already described, the sketch plat or this proposed subdivision is for a subdivision of up to 67 residential, single-family residential lots with a recreational component, stormwater, one access road onto US-1, and this is part of the Tranquility development, which is a 350-acre development that is governed by a master plan and a development agreement. It is all zoned, regional mixed use, which is the only zoning in the city that has that, the only property, this is the only development that has that zoning. It's specifically created for this development. This will be the third phase of three phases of subdivisions that will be going into this development per the master plan and the development agreement. The Planning and Zoning Commission did recommend a condition, because you'll see on page 503 of your packet, you'll see, you might have to zoom out when you see that sheet of the sketch plat. You should see at some point at the end of a trail coming from US-1 going east, that it proposes a bridge, a pedestrian bridge, over Addison Canal to connect to the Phase I and Phase II subdivisions on the other side of Addison Canal, which are under construction now. The condition basically states that during construction, so they can go forward, if this is approved, they go forward to the site plan submittal, and then get that approved, and then go forward with the construction with a permit, that they would at least at some point before completion, provide to us evidence that they've submitted to us an application, have received a determination, a formal determination from the state, whatever relevant state agencies are necessary in order to approve that bridge. There was just some discussion, in addition to that, at the Planning and Zoning Commission about a comment that was added in the report to you in your agenda about trying to preserve one particular parcel or lot, single-family lot that was proposed, to make it a tree tract. Something we typically try to propose when there are subdivisions submitted to us, to see if we can find some ways of preserving some existing trees. There was a response provided to us by the applicant at the time, which is part of the report, as you'll see. There was some confusion as to which lot. The original version of that sketch plat that was submitted to us during the first review, we made the comment about, I think it was Lot 34. In subsequent submittals, that lot number had changed to Lot 42. So that was the confusion that was happening at P&amp;Z, but basically, it is the same lot. So you'll see on that same tract, that same sheet, 503 of your packet, you'll see Lot 42, and that was the, the subject of discussion at the Planning and Zoning Commission. With that, I'll try and answer any questions you have.
City Clerk, any cards?
Yes, sir. We have Rodney Honeycutt.
Rodney Honeycutt, 3700 South Washington Avenue. So we're here tonight to request that you approve the sketch plat for Phase III Tranquility, which has 67 lots. That original plat, sketch plat that we had, had 75 lots. But during the permitting with DOT, they wanted us to move the access road, and so we lost eight lots when that happened. So that's done. Anyway, staff did ask us to preserve Lot 42, which they did say 34 in the comments, but it's Lot 42 on the actual sketch plat that we have now. During the P&amp;Z meeting, we were not sure exactly the type of trees. Pretty sure they were pines, but I couldn't guarantee it. But I do know now that they're all pine trees that are on that lot. And that actually, every tree on site that we removed is a pine tree, except one, a palm tree right in the middle of the access. And that's just because it's a pine tree area. I don't know if it was planted that way, or it just happened to be all pine trees. And so we don't want to forgive that lot or give it up, particularly since we've got a reduced number of lots now than what we anticipated. And also, we don't feel that pine trees, having five pine trees on a lot, that they will last either. They will, eventually, they'll die from boring, from pine bores and other things. Also, let you know that all the lots added up together on this track are only 41% of the lot. And there also, there's eight acres in this tract that are buffer and preserves. And so there is a lot of saved wooded areas. only forty-one percent of the lot. And there also, there's eight acres in this track that are buffer and preserves. And so there is a lot of saved wooded areas. I know some of that is because Addison Creek, but it goes on the south side and the north side of Addison Creek also. And so, um, just to remind you, we meet the development agreement that was agreed to with the city and the applicable codes to the project. Um, as, as far as the, um, permit for the bridge, um, we agree, uh, and understand that we will have to make an application and provide a copy of that to the city, and we'll follow through with it. This application will probably have to go to the Corps of Engineers, and, uh, I don't know if you know the story, but DEP took over the Corps a few years ago with an agreement. Uh, it took over jurisdiction, and, um, that was slow to get started, so that had a backlog. And then a group, um, sued the federal government and DEP, and they won. So DEP can no longer regulate Corps permits, so it had to go back to the Corps. So there's a big backlog, and the Corps does not have a response time that they have to meet. So we just want to make sure that you understand that we agree to make the application, do the best to get the permit, but we can't guarantee it, and we wouldn't want it to hold up construction or anything either. So are there any questions?
Members Moscoso?
First of all, we're matching, Mr. Honeycutt.
I know, it's Christmas.
Yes. Um, is the only place these projects would connect would be the, the trail going over Addison Canal?
So there's also, um, um, a sidewalk that connects it on US one.
Okay. And then my second question, since I'm, I'm new on, on the council, um, somewhere in the plans of tranquility, I'm very excited about it, it looks like a great project. Um, is there still shopping and commercial and all of those elements that were, um, talked about, uh, before?
Yes. Um, when you, the main entrance off of US one, except for this subdivision, there's com, there are commercial areas on both sides of that entrance.
Okay, thank you.
Member Nelson?
Rodney, if we go ahead with this and we put in as a condition the bridge, um, would there be a possibility of bonding that at the end if we can't get it done with this project? I want to hold the project up. Does that make sense?
Um.
Am I making sense?
I understand. Um, I'm not sure how that would work. You would, at what stage or, I mean, we're, we're going to do our best to get a permit. The Corps of Engineers is just the, the wildcard.
Okay, okay.
Any other questions? Any other cards?
Uh, Gary Allen is the last card.
Hi, Gary Allen, Jr., um, fifty-one fifty Tamiami Trail. I just wanted to come up and Rodney's a, the, the expert knows a lot more about it than I do, so if there's any technical questions, then I'll be the right guy, but I just wanted to put my name out there so in the event that there was some non-technical question that I could come up and speak, so, um, with that, I'll sit back down.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. Any questions for Mr. Allen? Seeing none? Any other clerk? City clerk? That was it? All right. So we just, uh, motion to approve? You only do, close the public hearing? Oh, sorry. Close the public hearing.
Move to approve the sketch plat for tranquility shores phase three with the condition, um, that the proposed trail over the Addison Canal connecting phase one subs, subdivision be permitted with site construction of phase three subdivision.
Second. Does that work?
Well, staff, is there more to that with regard to requirement that they submit an application?
Well, I, I just want a clarification on the, on the motion. The motion included the, what's written as the condition?
The condition says outlined in the, right.
Okay.
So I guess I could say, approve the sketch plat for tranquility shores phase three with the condition as outlined in staff report.
Okay.
Second. I have a motion and I have a second. Um, city clerk, can I have a roll call vote, please?
Yes, sir. Vice Mayor Cole?
Yes.
Member Moscoso?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
And Mayor Connors?
Yes. Motion carries? Onto eleven B, which is Huntington Park final plat. Huntington Park is a proposed eighty-six lot, single-family subdivision located west of Park Avenue and north of Country Club Drive that is currently under site construction. Sketch plat for Huntington Park subdivision was approved by city council on January twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-one. The final plat is consistent with the comprehensive plan, the preliminary plat and final plat requirements described in chapter thirty-four, Article Three, Division Plats of the Code. Staff has reviewed the final plat for consistency with the comprehensive plan, land development regulations, and recommends approval. Staff has also reviewed the covenants, First Amendment and to the covenants, performance bonds, and recommends acceptance. At the December fourth, twenty twenty-four meeting, Planning and Zoning Commission made a motion to approve this seven zero. Staff is here to answer any questions, and the Mylar is here and present, should you need to look at it. Any cards on this, city clerk?
Yes, sir. We have Bruce Moye.
All right.
And then James Hill.
James.
Um, council, honorable council members, sorry, I should have brought some water in. Um, I hope you can hear me all right. My name is James Hill. I'm, uh, the land development manager for, uh, Holiday Builders where the applicant and the developer and soon to be builder of homes in, uh, in Huntington Park. I thank you for your consideration this evening, and if you have any questions specific to the plat or the DCCRs, the covenants, I'd be more than happy to answer those at any time.
Any questions? Member Moscoso?
I do have a question, and, um, when I was looking at the map, there looks like there's going to be another subdivision behind this. Is there any plan to connect those subdivisions?
No. Uh, I, I'm not sure which subdivision. Is that the one to the west?
I think so, yeah.
Yeah, that's been around forever. I don't, and we, we looked at it, I don't anticipate that that's going to happen anytime soon. And there's really no way that we can do that because of the wetland complex that surrounds our property.
Okay, thank you.
Your bet.
Any other questions? At this time, I, is there, city clerk, is there any other cards? All right, I just wanted to make sure. And at this time, I'll close the public hearing. Member Nelson?
Move, motion to approve the final plat, covenants, First Amendment to the covenants, and performance bonds for Huntington Park subdivision.
A second.
I have a motion and I have a second. Uh, city clerk, can I have a vote, please?
Yes, sir. Member Moscoso?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Mayor Connors?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Cole?
Yes.
All right, motion carries. With that, we're going to take a ten-minute recess.
Thank you.[1112.15]
Back to order, City Manager.
Yes, Mayor, we're at consent agenda items. We have items eight A through eight I. City Council, do you have any questions as staff for consent? City Council, do you want to pull any of the consent agenda items for further discussion?
Member Nelson.
I don't want to pull anything, but I did want to say. Not sure. The slip lining manhole lift station rehab. I was just going to say, I really appreciate that. It's one in one of our old subdivisions and I think is probably needed. So, thank you.
Member Moscoso.
Yes, I would like to pull eight H. I really just have a question.
You could ask your question.
Okay, so I have a question. It appears we only had one bid on that. Is it possible to rebid for the sake of transparency? I would love to have another bid if possible, or is that common to just have one bid on something like this?
For this type of operation, it's pretty uncommon if I'm more than one company. The last time we bid it, we only had one responded as well, and that company is no longer in business. The reason why we rebid was he's retiring from the business. So, wetland operation next to a sewer plant, there's only two or three of those in that area at all. And we asked them to do a lot of operating of equipment inside the plant as far as our gates to the wetlands. So, it's very complicated. The normal engineering consultants don't do it. This is more of an environmental operation only.
So, for this one, I'm just concerned about possibly there being a conflict of interest because the, and I can get into a little bit of details if I find my notes, but this company is also connected with MBV Engineering, who we just saw come up, Bruce Moya's company. And so, you know, they're an engineering company, and they're also really heavily involved in a lot of our city projects. And so, I would feel more comfortable if we had another bid or if we put it out a little bit more because I do feel like there could be a conflict of interest here.
City Attorney, does this have to be voted on to pull an item off consent?
If you want to pull, no, a council member can pull it off for discussion, and we'll have cards.
Okay.
And then you'll vote on it separately from the rest of the agenda if it's pulled, or if they just want to ask these questions.
Okay. So, Member Moscoso, are you pulling this item?
I mean, those are all of the questions I have, but if we would like to discuss it, I would, if you guys have comments, I'd be happy to pull it to discuss.
The members asked for questions. If you don't want to pull it, then we'll just vote on that item with the rest of your consent agenda. If you want to pull it for a separate vote, then you can pull it for a separate vote.
It's up to you if you're going to pull it.
Okay, I'd like to pull it for a separate vote, please. Thank you.
So, the item is pulled.
City Clerk, are there any cards for consent?
Yes, we have two individuals that would like to speak.
Mayor, I'd like to read the titles for the record. Consent agenda item eight A, authorize the city manager to execute the task order for the comprehensive plan evaluation and appraisal report. Consent agenda item eight B, approve amendment one to the contract amendment for GeoPoint Survey Incorporated. Consent agenda item eight C, approve the Tifa Titusville Farmington LLC FY 2025 budget and FY 2026 pro forma projections. Consent agenda item eight D, approve the amendment to the traffic signal maintenance and compensation agreement with FDOT. Consent agenda item eight E, approve change order number two for ARPA FY 23 slip lining and manhole lift station rehabilitation. Consent agenda item eight F, approve the chiller replacement at the police department. Consent agenda item eight G, approve the Village Grove of La Cita Phase One, Unit One, Phase One, Unit Two, Third Amendment to the Declaration of Covenants, Conditions and Restrictions. Consent agenda item eight H has been pulled for further discussion. Consent agenda item eight I, approve the purchase of equipment for Public Works.
Card, please.
We have Tony Shifalo for item eight A.
Shifalo, Tropic Street. The city's love affair with Kimley Horn and their nightmare vision for tomorrow planned to rewrite our comprehensive plan continues with even more extravagant expenditure to update the plan based on changes in state requirements and local conditions since we transmitted pieces of it. Since plan goals are long range and are essentially a community vision, the input from the community should be included and modifications made to the plan based on this input. However, in the many drafts of the plan that I've seen, nothing has changed from the beginning documents presented to citizens at the first workshops to the finished documents presented to council. Kimley Horn is getting $60,000 for this phase of a continuing contract since December 2nd, 2021, and is assigned March 20th, 23. So, this is not my first introduction to this company or process. The scope of work proposed includes task three, public engagement. Kimley Horn will review feedback received during prior public engagements such as the 2018 Titusville Tomorrow Visioning and the 2024 Titusville Natural Resources Public Engagement Project. And they're going to identify items for incorporation into, they're going to incorporate public input. I don't think so. Kimley Horn is going to present a presentation to planning and zoning, which will also provide an opportunity for more public input. No changes have been made, Brad, to any of these drafts since the very beginning, especially about certain areas in the city. So, for their final task, they're going, Kimley Horn is going to prepare a draft of the comprehensive plan amendments based on all these changes in the local conditions and public engagement. So, I'm going to be closely looking at these recommendations to see if they truly do reflect local conditions and public input. For after all, the comprehensive plan is our dream book for our town, not developers or investors who want to profit from the destruction of our environment through greed-driven, unregulated overgrowth. Don't you agree, Member Cole, that we should very carefully consider changes to our comprehensive plan and how they will affect the citizens, not be just for the developers?
Thank you, Ms. Tony.
Next card is Dwight Severs for items A, C, and F.
Dwight Severs, Titusville. Appearing before you on item A concerning Kimley Horn. This contract was originally awarded that they're presently renewing or another requisition on. It was awarded to Keenan Associates in 2021, and Kimley Horn and associate bought out the company or merged with them. I'm not sure. But in any event, in February of this year, I raised concerns about them because they were representing a private development, in particular, the registry development, which involved changes to the comprehensive plan. At the same time, they had a contract with the city to make recommendations about the comprehensive plan. Dealing with quasi judicial procedure and fundamental conflicting employment provisions and ethics, I raised a formal objection before the Planning and Zoning Commission. I think the city council at that time in February received a copy of it. Finally, we had a meeting before Planning and Zoning Commission, and finally, the developer withdrew his application, so I guess that one went away. I had made a public records request as a part of that to see how many contracts Kimley Horn had, and they had 15 different contracts or orders involving hundreds of thousands of dollars. In addition, since one provision of the contract, and I see three different conflicting employment provisions, one in Kimley Horn's contract, one in Keenan's contract, and one in the bid document. One of them says consultant may accept retainers from or be employed by third parties who appears conflicting or inconsistent with that of the city if after full written disclosure of the facts, the city determines that there are no apparent conflict. I made a public records request. Where is there written request to represent a private developer on this project? Guess what? There's no record. They didn't make the request. I'm aware of another contract that had the same, where they represented another private developer at the same time having a contract with the city. I feel as though you need to get this right. If you're going to have them represent the city, then they shouldn't be representing private developers at the same time. For example, if the council is the final judge in a quasi judicial proceeding.
Thank you.
One or two sentences. Is that okay?
Two sentences.
Would it be appropriate for the judge to have 15 different contracts or work orders with the consultant, and the same consultant have a case before the judge? Would it be appropriate?
Thank you, Dwight.
You want me to stay up here on the other side?
I mean.
There are two other items.
Yeah, you all get one. No more cards.
All right. So, unless I see any lights to pull anything else, I'll need a motion to approve the consent agenda items.
Minus H.
Minus H.
I can do that. I think I would like to have Mr. Broom address Dwight's issues with item A before I make that motion.
I think his issue was in the future, they're going to have to present conflict of interest paperwork if there's a conflict of interest for council's consideration on the representing private. That would have to be evaluated. I know that that's happened in the past year and many, many years, but we can certainly look at that. I don't know that that would affect the signing of this agreement, but I think he's saying that you're doing projects because the one project was withdrawn. I'm not intimately familiar with what projects they're on, but that would be looked at in the future, is what I believe is what he said.
If that's the way it's written, then I think we probably should look at it, at least for future reference. I do think that there are a limited number of companies that do this type of work, and so I think inherently you're going to get some conflicts.
Those projects could have been done for years that way. We can certainly look at that.
Okay. So, with that in mind, I would move to approve consent agenda items A through I without H.
Second.
I have a motion, and I have a second. City Clerk, can I have a roll call vote, please?
Yes, sir. Member Nelson?
Yes.
Mayor Connors?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Cole?
Yes.
Member Moscoso?
Yes.
And consent agenda item eight H, which is the award of the Contract of Blue Heron Wetlands Operations Services. City of Titusville operates the Blue Heron Wetlands as part of the Blue Heron Water Reclamation Facility and in compliance with applicable FD permits. Utilizes a consultant to assist in the monitoring of the wetlands by providing the services that are listed in your packet. On October 25th, 2024, city advertised for the consultants to provide wetlands operations services to the city. On November 15th, 2024, one firm, Florida Environmental Consulting of Vera Beach, Florida, responded to the RFP. On November 21st, 2024, a selection committee consisting of A and D Janser, P.E., Ashley Smith, P.E., and Mr. Fernandez, Chief Operating Operator, met to review and scope the proposal. It is recommended that city council approve the award of the contract for the Blue Heron Wetland Operations Services to Florida Environmental Consulting in the amount of $58,220, and additionally authorize the mayor to execute the contract.
City Clerk, any cards? City Council members. Member Moscoso.
Yes, so kind of like what I stated before, I would like to see this rebid just for the sake of transparency. As we're also seeing, there are questions with Kimley Horn, and people have questions. I know that, Mr. Cook, you mentioned this is quite difficult. There maybe aren't that many companies out there. But what is the bidding process like for something like this?
So, we advertise a request for proposal, both on city websites and DemandStars are hosting service for our bidding. I did look. We had 36 panelists holders, so there's 36 companies that did look at the bids. Some of them are not able to do this work, but they look at all the city bids. So, those are our two avenues that we advertise. It goes out as requests for proposals. So, they provide back a, the responses included in the packet in this case because it's not a CCNA item protected by consultants. They're able to provide pricing along with their scope work.
So, I've noticed noticing this trends with many things, like for example, the magistrate as well. We only had one bid for that, for this project. And so, I'm wondering if it's possibly something, now I don't know the ins and outs of how you're doing this, if there's another way that we can get this information out and possibly have more bids because just for the sake of transparency, I think it's quite important that we've used every avenue possible to do this.
The other thing we could do with this particular one is I do have five continuing consulting contracts currently. If we want to, I can reach out to them and see if they're interested under their continuing contracts with the city. I can't tell you that they would be because of the scope is pretty small.
Yeah.
Most of them are very large companies. This is not going to be something they want to do, but if that makes the council feel better, we can certainly.
And for this one, who set the price point? Was it the environmental company themselves?
Yes, the price in the agenda item is the proposal from the company. We had a budget for it, but they came back with a response on the price.
What was the budget for this?
I believe currently we're paying closer to $80,000 for this service.
Okay.
Member Nelson.
Thank you. And I understand the desire for transparency, but I think when we get into some of these areas, one, there's not a lot of people in that field. So, that makes it difficult to get five people running to us and saying, let us give your bid when there's only five people in the state that do it. So, I think that makes it more difficult. And logistically, there may be some companies that don't want to do this type of work. They don't want to travel to Titusville. It's additional expense, additional paperwork for them. So, we can't make people bid so that we can be transparent. But I don't have any problem with Mr. Cook asking the five continuing engineers to, if they would, look at this.
Thank you, Member Nelson. Vice Mayor Cole.
I've been through RFPs and bidding on projects for many, many years, and I understand what Kevin is saying, and what he's saying is true because the size of this project is $58,000, which is not a big project. And it entails a lot of stuff, like bringing equipment in and moving around. I'm not sure that we're going to get a different result if we do it again because you've put it on the various platforms that are required for our bidding. In the government, we used to use something called the Commerce Business Daily, which, you know, sometimes you get bids and sometimes you don't. Delaying this, will it have any deleterious effect on the operations that we have down there?
No, we have the option. We can do a lot of these in-house with our operators. We also, with the existing contract, I think we have them extended through the end of the calendar year. So, and we can go back to them. If the desire is to rebid, we can talk to them about extending their time if possible, or we'll pick it up with our staff. We'll continue our permit compliance requirements.
Well, and then you also consider when we did, I believe we did this under the normal procedures and went out, and you have one bid back. Now their price is out. So, if you're not going to accept this, you have to rebid and do the whole thing over. You know, because their price is out there now, and you can't just ask for more bids. You would have to reject the bids and start over again because their price is out there now.
Member Moscoso.
Yes. No, I understand that. Thank you for helping me understand the process as well. And I do think maybe $58,000 seems like chunk change, but that also is taxpayer dollars that we need to be concerned with. And so, my issue really is with the conflict of interest with MBV Engineering, who is doing a lot of work in our city, and the fact that the B stands for, I think his name is Andrew Bowles, who is the Vice President of the Florida Environmental Consulting. So, I do just see there being a lot of connections there. So, my preference would be to rebid, but I do understand what you're saying as well.
Vice Mayor Cole.
Well, in, you know, in all honesty, if we're concerned about taxpayer money, as Attorney Broom has said, the price is out there. So, now if we rebid, other contractors know what our low bid was. And with escalation the way we have it, that number could come in a lot higher. And it's like throwing dice. I would be concerned about going out and rebidding it because the price, as Kevin said, initially, their estimate was $80,000, and the bid came at 58. I have a concern about going back out and rebidding it.
All right. Looks like discussion's closed up. I need a motion.
I would move to approve item eight, award a contract for Blue Heron Wetlands Operations Services.
Second.
I have a motion. I have a second. City Clerk, can I have a roll call vote, please?
Yes, sir. Mayor Connors?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Cole?
Yes.
Member Moscoso?
No.
And Member Nelson? And Member Nelson?
Yes.
Motion carries. City Manager?
Onto ordinance's second reading, public hearing and related action. We're on 9A, which is ordinance number 45, 2024, Consolidated Fee for Development Applications and Legal Advertising. City Attorney will read for the record the ordinance.
Ordinance number 45, 2024, an ordinance of the City of Titusville, Florida, amending the code of ordinances by amending community development fees, by amending development review procedures, manual section 17.1, comprehensive plan amendment, zoning, rezoning, conditional use permits, development review committee and master plan fees, 17.4, board of adjustments and appeals fees, 17.5, development agreement vested rights applications, beneficial use determination, transfer of development rights, administrative waiver, and 17.6, vacating rights of way and easements, street renaming, by adding a new section 17.8, building relocation pursuant to chapter 6-10 Buildings and Building Regulations Amendments, to provide a building relocation fee, by renumbering and amending section 17.8 fee refund waiver policy to be section 17.9, and by adding a new section 17.10, special circumstances, authorizing city to collect fees equal to cost if new advertising requirements are created, providing for findings, severability, repeal of conflicting ordinances, incorporation into the code, and an effective date.
This item was tabled at the regular city council meeting on November 26, 2024 at 6:30. On November 6, 2024, the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval 7-0. The city regularly evaluates the true costs of services and proposes adjustments where necessary. Based on an evaluation of advertising costs for the past year, is recommended that advertising fees be increased. Further advertising fees should be consolidated into the development application fees. The consolidated fees will provide an ease of understanding by the public and an implementation by the city. Staff recommends amending the development review procedures manual 17, section 17, by this ordinance and updating the development application fees in order to include the cost of required advertising. This is the second reading and the public hearing for ordinance number 45, 2024.
Thank you, City Manager. City Clerk, is there any cards on this?
Yes, sir.
Yep, Member Nelson?
Move to adopt ordinance number 45-2024, consolidate fees for development applications and legal advertising.
Second.
I have a motion, I have a second. I have a closed public hearing. City Clerk, can you call the roll call vote, please?
Vice Mayor Cole?
Yes.
Member Moscoso?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Mayor Connors?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Onto item B, which is ordinance number 46, 2024, Willow Creek Community Development District contractions agreement. City Attorney will read ordinance number 46, 2024.
Ordinance 46, 2024, an ordinance of the City of Titusville, Florida, amending ordinance number 88, 2005, and contracting the boundary of the Willow Creek Community Development District pursuant to chapter 190 Florida statutes 2024, providing a title, providing findings, describing the amended external boundaries of the district, describing the functions and powers of the district, providing for notice requirements, providing for severability, providing for administrative correction of the scrivener's errors, and providing an effective date.
This item was tabled at the regular city council meeting on November 26, 2024 at 6:30. The amendment of the district boundaries will not act to amend any other land development approvals and/or applicable land development regulations governing the land area to be included within the district. The amendment of the district boundaries will constitute a timely and efficient and effective responsive and economic way to deliver community development services in this area described in the petition. This is the second and final public hearing for, second reading and final public hearing for ordinance number 46, 2024.
Thank you, City Manager. City Clerk, is there any cards?
Yes, sir. We have Roy Van Wyk.
Good evening, Mayor. Council members, Roy Van Wyk with Kalinsky Van Wyk, on behalf of the petitioner. Our law firm represents the Willow Creek Community Development District. I was here on November 12th, prior to this commission change, and thank you all very much for giving me the time to speak that evening. I appreciate it. We're asking that you allow us to amend the existing ordinance that created this special district to reduce the acreage, so that we can create a separate special district. That will be the next item up on your agenda. That will allow for us to complete the work that's in phase one or the original district, allow the residents to take over that board there and handle all the remaining completion of the improvements, and then we'll have a separate development for phase two, which would be the new Willow Creek Community Development District Phase Two. Mr. Honeycutt's here, he can answer any specific questions you may have. If not, included in your agenda package should be our prefiled written testimony along with the copies of the proof of publications that were required under chapter 190. And I can answer any questions you may have. If not, I would ask that you approve this ordinance, amending the previous ordinance.
Thank you. Is there any other cards?
No, sir.
All right. Can I get a motion? Member Moscoso?
Sorry, I do have a question for Mr. Honeycutt, or for you, if you can answer it. And this might be for 9C, so I noticed that the, it said that the city will be maintaining the roads after, that the city will be maintaining the roads. Is that common practice for a CDD?
I don't know if that's the case with this one. I don't know the answer to that question. It is common practice for some, for CDDs to convey roads to cities or counties, and it is common that they keep them. It's all dependent upon the land development code of the jurisdiction. So whatever we do is gonna be in compliance with your code requirements.
Thank you.
Rodney Honeycutt, and I can give you a card afterwards. 3700 South Washington Avenue. I see it done both ways. I think in tranquility, they're going to maintain the roads because they want the landscape to always look nice, and they feel that that'll be a way of doing it. I know that Willow Creek, that main entrance that comes in, they are maintaining that landscape. And so I think the road, though, in tranquility and the public utilities are city maintained.
Okay. I was wondering if possibly it would be an option, because we have many issues with our roads here in town, that perhaps we take over the maintenance of the road after construction is complete? Would that be something you would be open to?
It wouldn't be my decision. I can.
Or we can, possibly, you can discuss.
We can certainly ask, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Any other cards?
Yes.
All right, closing the public hearing. Can I have a motion?
Move to adopt ordinance number 46, 2024, Willow Creek Community Development District Contractions Agreement Amendment, excuse me.
Second.
I have a motion, I have a second. City Clerk, can you call the vote, please?
Yes, sir. Member Moscoso?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Mayor Connors?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Cole?
Yes.
Motion carries. City Manager?
Onto item C, which is ordinance number 47, 2024, Willow Creek II Community Development District Establishment.
Ordinance number 47, 2024, an ordinance of the City of Titusville, Florida, granting the petition to establish the Willow Creek II Community Development District pursuant to chapter 190 Florida statutes 2024, concerning that approximately 425.15 plus minus acres of land, providing a title, describing the petition to establish the Willow Creek II Community Development District, creating and naming the district, providing findings, describing the functions and powers of the district, providing for notice requirements, designating five persons to serve as the initial members of the district's Board of Supervisors, providing for severability, providing for administrative correction of scrivener's errors, and providing an effective date.
This item was tabled at the regular city council meeting on November 26, 2024 at 6:30. The developer with the consent of the property owners is seeking to establish a community development district, a CDD for a special purpose unit of the local government created pursuant of chapter 190 Florida statutes, for the purpose of financing, constructing, operating, and maintaining a community-wide infrastructure, improvements, and services for the benefit of the properties within its boundaries. Staff finds the petition to be complete and correct and has met all of the following factors described in Florida statutes. Staff is recommending that you conduct the second hearing for Willow Creek II Community Development District Establishment.
Thank you. City Clerk, any cards?
Only one. Roy Van Wyk?
Thank you again. I'll be brief, Roy Van Wyk, on behalf of KB Holmes and with Kalinsky Van Wyk. We have prefiled written testimony that we filed with the board, and we have our proof of publication. The prefiled written testimony should establish compliance with all of the six criteria that are listed in the statute for establishment. This is the land that we just took out of the other district to create a separate one, so that we can continue development as a separate phase. There's any questions, I can answer them. If not, I'd ask that you approve that.
Thank you. Seeing none, can I have a motion, please? Member Nelson?
Move to approve ordinance number 47, 2024, Willow Creek II Community Development District Establishment.
Second.
I have a motion, I have a second. City Clerk, can you call the vote, please?
Yes. Member Nelson?
Yes.
Mayor Connors?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Cole?
Yes.
Member Moscoso?
Yes.
Motion carries. City Manager?
Onto item D, which is ordinance number 48, 2024, the annual update of the five-year capital improvement schedule, the dates of 2025 through 2029, relating to the capital improvement element of the comprehensive plan, CPA number 3-2024. The city attorney will read the ordinance for the record.
Ordinance number 48, 2024, an ordinance of the City of Titusville, Florida, updating the five-year capital improvement schedule of the comprehensive plan of the City of Titusville for the 2025-2029 horizon, relating to the capital improvement element and providing for an effective date.
Florida statute requires that the city's five-year capital improvement program and capital improvement element be updated annually. All local governments are required to include a CIE in the comprehensive plan that considers the need for and location of public facilities and provides a component that outlines the principles of construction, extension, or increase in capacity of the public facilities, as well as a component that outlines principles of correcting for existing public facilities deficiencies, which are necessary to implement the comprehensive plan. The period of planning for this element is five years. The Planning and Zoning Commission, acting as your local planning agency at their December 4, 2024 meeting, moved to approve, as recommended, with the following two recommendations. As part of the capital improvement program, explore more grant opportunities, and number two, amend the subdivision code to require traffic calming design standards. The motion was made and approved 7-0. This is the second reading and public hearing for ordinance number 48, 2024.
All right. City Clerk, do you have any cards? All right.
Mayor, if I may, I do have a couple of things I'd like to add. Since you saw this at your first reading, there have been a few changes in the schedule itself. We noticed a few items that were included in the first version that was shown to you at your last meeting that were not concurrency-related. We took those out. Specifically, we removed items such as purchase of vehicles for stormwater schedule, from the stormwater schedule, rather. Vehicles are not used for purposes of meeting the stormwater level of service standard in the comp plan. We also removed planned upgrades and repairs for the Harry T. Moore Center. The center is not included in the parks and open space level of service calculation in the comp plan. So there's a few things that we've noticed. So the version, so therefore we moved, removed them. So the version you have here in your packet on page 384 of your packet is the correct schedule. It was the recommendation that P&amp;Z made. My understanding is that there were some questions about the fact that our population has now increased and exceeded 50,000. One member addressed it with several questions related to, there's more opportunities as far as grants. And so the first recommendation that P&amp;Z made is related to creating a more robust program in-house, basically, that looks at grants, which we do. So I think that's what they were really getting at with that first recommendation. Kevin was at that meeting, so he could probably correct me if I'm wrong. The second recommendation was related to traffic calming design standards, and that was specifically related to long roadways or local roads and proposed subdivisions and, that are linear, and trying to find ways to calm the traffic or make them sinuous in some way. So if that is a recommendation that's approved by you, that would mean having to go back and make a change to the code. So that'd be a separate ordinance. With that, I'll try to answer any questions you have.
Member Moscoso?
Yes, Brett, I do have a follow-up question. So the traffic calming would not go under capital improvements. It would be something we look at in the code, correct?
No, what they're suggesting is a code change about a design standards. So that was what their recommendation was, that we basically asked you to approve advisability directing us to come up with another ordinance to change the code that includes additional standards instead of our code. Whatever that may be, that's something we'll have to research, if that's your desire.
I've sat through some of those meetings at P&amp;Z, and a lot of that came up with, if you look at the different projects, for example, Huntington Park, if you go by there, it's on Park Avenue, it really, it curves around, it has a really nice traffic calming pattern to it. However, if you look at Verona, the Willow Creek one, it's a straight shot. And so I do think it would be nice to at least explore that option at getting more information.
Member Nelson?
I tend to agree with you, but I'm not sure that it needs to be part of our capital improvement schedule. I mean, maybe that needs to be something separate that we talk about, maybe at the end of the meeting.
We did not see this recommendation as suggesting a change to the schedule that's proposed to you.
Okay, so if we, if the motion is to adopt ordinance, this ordinance with the second recommendation, it won't cause a problem.
We would interpret that to mean a direction for us to research code changes. I don't know how else to interpret that.
Okay.
No. Did I ask for cards already? Okay, now I'm ready.
Now you're ready? Okay. So I would move to adopt ordinance number 48-2024, updating the five-year capital improvement schedule of the comp plan for the City of Titusville for 2025 to '29, with the condition to recommend it by planning and zoning.
Is motion on the floor?
Second.
I have a motion and I have a second. City Clerk, can you call the vote, please?
Mayor Connors?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Cole?
Yes.
Member Moscoso?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Onto item E, which is ordinance number 49, 2024, granting a franchise to Pivotal Utilities Holdings, i.e. Florida Gas. The City of Titusville previously adopted ordinance number 4-1993 that granted a franchise to the City Gas Company of Florida, Division of Florida City Gas, and predecessor, the Elizabeth Gas Company, for 30 years. The term of the franchise agreement has expired, and the city has negotiated a succession franchise ordinance for council's consideration. And city attorney will read ordinance number 49, 2024, for the record.
Ordinance number 49, 2024, an ordinance of the City of Titusville, Florida, granting to Pivotal Utility Holdings, Inc., DBA Florida City Gas, its successors in the signs, a non-exclusive gas franchise imposing provisions and conditions related thereto, providing for monthly payment of a franchise fee to the city, providing for adoption of representations, repealing all ordinances in conflict, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date.
This is the second reading and public hearing for the approval of ordinance number 49, 2024.
Thank you, City Manager. City Clerk, are there any cards?
No cards.
Any discussion? Seeing none, can I have a motion?
Move to approve ordinance number 49, 2024, granting a franchise to Pivotal Utility Holdings, Inc., doing business as Florida City Gas.
Second.
I have a motion, I have a second. Can I have a vote? City Clerk, please?
Vice Mayor Cole?
Yes.
Member Moscoso?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Mayor Connors?
Yes. Motion carries. City Manager?
Onto ordinance's first reading, which is item 10A. This is the ordinance number 1-2025, multi-family infill lots ordinance, and the city attorney will read this ordinance for the record.
Ordinance number 1, 2025, an ordinance of the City of Titusville, Florida, amending the code of ordinances to encourage development of multi-family infill lots by reducing landscape yard requirements within interior side yard setbacks by amending chapter 28 zoning, sections 28, 3- by amending chapter twenty-eight zoning, sections twenty-eight, three oh six, multi-family medium-density residential R-two, and twenty-eight, three oh seven, multi-family high-density residential R-three, providing for separability, repeal of conflicting ordinances, incorporation into the code, and an effective date.
At the December fourth, twenty-twenty-four, Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval six-one with one abstention.
Thank you. Yeah, is there any cards?
We have one card. It's Elizabeth Baker.
Oh, I'm sorry. I know that was, it was different. I'm still filled it out wrong.
Okay. Wait, I'm sorry. I may have the wrong person. Okay.
So I wanted to address both A and, excuse me, both A and B here. It seems like every time we look at an amendment to the comprehensive plan, it's for profit for the developers and landlords, and it's at the cost and expense of the residents and their neighbors. Here's another example where the goal is to reduce the buffer so that there's more noise for the entire neighborhood and the immediate neighbors as well. The idea that every developer has to make a lot of money at the expense of our residences and the people who will populate their rental units for the rest of their lives is really sad. We, as a city, set up a comprehensive plan to ensure the quality of our community and the quality of our lives. And every time we water down the comprehensive plan, we are doing short-term profit for the developers and the landlords and long-term costs to our residents. On B, it's another example of, well, we're just going to put high-density where we've zoned medium-density. Once again, cramming more people into a smaller area that shouldn't be packed full of people. And it impacts, again, the citizens who are going to live there and their neighbors. We have a comprehensive plan for a reason. The reason is to keep the quality of our community so that people want to live here, want to rent here, and want to buy here, not are forced to live like sardines. I really hope that as a council, we're looking at what's best for the people of the city who fund the city and not what's going to short-term be gainful for the developers and for the people whose pockets they're lining within our city administration. Thank you.
Thank you. Before you go, can you say your name for the record, please?
Sorry, Elizabeth Parker. To be in a circle.
Thank you. City Clerk, any other cards? All right. City Manager?
On to item ten B, which is small-scale comprehensive plan amendment SSA number eight dash twenty-twenty-four, seventeen seventeen, Barna Avenue, Royal Manor Townhouses. City Attorney will read the ordinances for the record.
Ordinance number two, twenty-twenty-five, an ordinance of the city of Titusville, Florida amending the code of ordinances by amending ordinance number sixty, nineteen eighty-eight, which adopted the comprehensive plan of the city of Titusville by amending the future land use designation on land located at the northeast corner of the intersection of Barna Avenue and Day Street from low-density residential to medium-density residential on five point seven four plus minus acres of property, having partial ID numbers twenty-two, thirty-five, zero-nine, zero-three, twenty-one point zero-two, and twenty-two, thirty-five, zero-nine, zero-three, twenty-one point zero-three, providing for separability, repeal of conflicting ordinances, and providing for an effective date. Ordinance number three, twenty-twenty-five, an ordinance amending ordinance number five, nineteen ninety-three, of the city of Titusville, Florida, by amending the zoning map, made a partisan ordinance by reference by changing the zoning classification on land located at the northeast corner of the intersection of Barna Avenue and Day Street from the single-family medium-density R-one-B zoning district to the multi-family high-density residential R-three zoning district on five point seven four plus minus acres of property, having partial ID numbers twenty-two, thirty-five, zero-nine, zero-three, twenty-one point zero-two, and twenty-two, thirty-five, zero-nine, zero-three, twenty-one point zero-three, providing for separability, repeal of conflicting ordinances, and providing for an effective date.
On December fourth, twenty-twenty-four, the Planning and Zoning Commission, acting as your local planning agency, recommended a motion to deny the future land use. Map motion to deny was passed five yes to no. The commission also made a motion to deny the rezoning based on it does not comply with the future land use. The motion to deny was passed seven-zero. Brad's here to describe the project and answer questions that you have.
City Clerk, any cards?
Yes, sir. Rodney Honeycutt?
Rodney Honeycutt, thirty-seven hundred South Washington Avenue. This is the first reading, and so basically, we'd just like to hear any comments you might have. The rezoning request was from single-family to multifamily R-three. The reason being is the client wanted to construct twenty-foot-wide units, and that's the only one that allows that. Staff showed that in a matrix, in the meantime, we applied for medium-density residential. Staff showed us in a matrix that those are not compatible per the code. And so we understand that. And so the recommendation, I think, from staff was the medium-density residential and R-two multifamily. And so we're just here tonight to hear comments so we know how to proceed the public hearings at the first city council meeting in January.
Member Moscoso?
Sorry, just to make sure I understand. So since the Planning and Zoning Commission, you went from R-three down to R-two?
We had no choice, but yes, that's true, and the client agrees.
Okay, and what does that change for your amount of units?
The most units that we could get with R-three was forty-three. It appears the most units with R-two would be around thirty-five.
Okay, because it was-
But that would be if we get a variance to the square footage.
Okay, thank you.
Vice Mayor Cole?
So Rodney, let me understand. This plat of land is located right as you turn in to go to the veterans cemetery, is that correct?
It's just north of that. There's actually an existing-
And that's a single-family residential area, is that correct?
So it's a mixed area. As far as the land use, just one lot to the east is medium-family residential. It's single-family homes instead of multifamily. And then you go to the end of the block, and there is a high-density residential multifamily. And then if you go south of the site to north of Grove Church, there are two parcels that are zoned, one R-two and one R-three.
But in that particular block that we are referring to, the majority of the homes are single-family, right?
The adjacent homes around it are single-family.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions? Thank you, Rodney.
Thank you.
Ken and Colleen Miller?
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Ken Miller, and that's my wife, Colleen Miller. We represent this item that Rodney just spoke about. And we've had comments around the room this night that developers are just coming in to destroy our community, Titusville community, for profits and against to ship the money out of here. We are not fly-by-night people here. We've been here in Titusville for twenty-three years. We own that property now for twenty-one years. We are not just seeking to enrich ourselves, but to enrich the community. That's why it's still there, and that's why we are working on the best plan. And the best plan is the one that we have presented to this council. As Rodney spoke a while ago and said that this secondary plan that the council has recommended, it's possible we can work with it as well. We are here to take questions from you. And as I said, we've been around here for quite a long time. We love Titusville. It's our home. We have never lived in any other state or any other place in the United States for longer than twenty-three years in any one location. We don't plan to move, or we're not going anywhere. Our longest, our second-longest place that we have lived was in Fort Lauderdale, which was sixteen years. By far, we have exceeded it here in Titusville. And now it's our retirement home. We want to see it's beautiful. We want to see it grows well and controlled. We want to see residents here enjoy the appreciation in their assets. And whatever we're putting in there will be an appreciation of the properties in and around that area. It will not be a deterrent, it will not be a subtraction from what is already there. As a matter of fact, it will enhance what's there.
Thank you very much, sir. Member Moscoso?
It's a beautiful piece of property. There's a lot of heritage trees, and I mean, it's absolutely gorgeous. It's old Florida, and so I'd love to see as much of that saved as possible. When you talk about you want to enrich the community, what does that look like to you?
You want to?
You want to enrich the community. One of the things I heard at the Planning and Zoning Commission was that they were hoping it would be affordable housing. And so is that what you mean by saying enrich the community?
Affordable housing as compared, affordable as compared with single-family homes. Because we're seeking to put townhomes in there. We're not seeking to put low-income homes, if that's what you're associating affordable with. Because there seemed to be some confusion with the term affordable and low-income. And I know there's resistance towards low-income. We've been in this city, as I said, for quite a while. We have owned other property, which was more considered low-income as a rental property. We owned that property on Sycamore Street, that long building there. It was once ponderosa, for those of us who are, who've been around long enough to know it was ponderosa. We came in in two thousand and one. We bought that property, and it was in shambles. It was less than twenty-five percent occupancy. It's all was tattered and torn. There was police being called upon several times before the night. As a matter of fact, sometime this police vehicle was parked across at Gibson's Center. Just as soon as I called, they would be right on hand. We got there, we fenced that property, we invested money in repainting, refurbishing, new air-conditioned units, appliances, and all that, and we uplifted the level of tenancy that was there, at the same time keeping the rentals at three hundred, three fifty, four hundred, and we're at a low and affordable price. We took in section eight applicants in there as well, and we run a successful business there. When the property was sold, we've moved the funds over and we invested it into this property in question, a royal manor. And in light of what we're saying, we want to restore what that place was intended for. When we look at the names, when we were naming that subdivision, we named it Royal Manor. We named the street inside there Majestic Court, in line with what was intended by the original developers of that area. They appear to have had great plans, which have seemed to have fallen over the years, and, you know, King's Court, Queen Street, Elizabeth Street, at least give imagery of England.
Royalty.
I don't, Cologne, well. It's prestigious, put it that way, to put it in one word. And we seem to want to do the same thing for Titusville. We love the place. As a matter of fact, if those townhomes are put in there, we probably be the first to buy the first unit in there.
So they're meant to be purchased, sorry?
I added another light on. Member Nelson?
Oh, I was just going to say. I tend to agree with the others that I'm not crazy about seeing high-density in the middle of single-family residential. So I'm hoping, hopefully, you'll come back with something not quite as dense, not having quite that much density.
That's why we said we were able, if you grant us the R-two, we would be able to formulate a plan to match with that R-two as well. We show, we're still, we're still having the same goal in mind as enhancing the community and make it something that we really are passionate about. We really love Titusville, you know, there's no question about it. We love the neighborhood. We want to see it develop better or be restored or whatever. We weren't here forty years ago. We're only here twenty, since twenty years ago. We knew what we came into. We invested our own hard-earned cash. We plow back our profits here, right here in this town, in that same locality. We're not going to just, we're not here, as I said, fly-by-night. We're not here to just, you know, invest today and tomorrow. We're here. Our children grew up here. Our daughter attended BCC when it was BCC. She did her degree there in teaching. She's a teacher here. She teaching in this local community. Our son-in-law also teach, taught in MIMS, and he also is in the Air Force. The second daughter is here in Tampa. So we're all local. We're Floridians, for that sake, for many years. We love Florida. We ain't going anywhere. And I just want to come for the people who see us, or may not see us, or may not have known us, and just consider that it's just a matter of a fly-by-nighter, just coming into town. Or, as a matter of fact, one lady asked me just since night here, what corporation I represent. Am I a corporate client or something, or representing some corporation? No, we represent just ourselves. All the things that we have done here in Titusville was done and continue to be done in our individual names. Simple people, we are private people. Maybe that's why you don't see much of us around town. If you visit churches, if, for example, the Crossroads Community, you would have seen us or known us there, or the Park Avenue Baptist Church, that's pretty much where our social life lies.
Thank you very much, sir. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
City Manager?
We are to petitions and requests.
We have more cards.
Oh, we have more cards.
Teresa Bazillion, eighteen forty-five Fairlane Drive. Property that we're talking about right now is around the corner from me. I like to walk up Barna an awful lot. My concern with this property, it is divided into two units. The one was cleared so that they could put water handling. There's a ditch, and that's where they put some water lines to go to the other parcel, which is just under four acres. That's where the land, the road was put in. Initially in March, we were told by Mr. Honeycutt that it was going to be forty-eight units. And there was a picture showing forty-eight units covering a circle around the cul-de-sac. That was amended at the planning board to forty-three. Now they're saying thirty-five. The initial fee or what the cost was going to be for the units, we were told in March it was going to be two hundred thousand. That got changed to three hundred thousand last week. So I'm not quite sure how set in stone or what the ultimate decision or what the homes were going to be. Early in the two thousands, when there was an improvement, there was an authorization to go to sixteen single-family homes on this property, and that's what the water lines on the municipal map shows. The water's coming in from Day Street. There are tee-offs for sixteen single-family homes in that area, which would allow about a quarter-acre lot for each home. Barna Avenue, it is a higher level than the rest of the property. Day Street has quite a slope, and even though that is where the water handling side is, I'm really concerned with construction and disturbing the land, that it's not going to hold the water. The trees are going to be removed like they did on the lot that is used for water handling. There are some tall pines. They're at least fifty foot, yeah, fifty foot. I saw a few oaks that were there. I'd hate to see those go in the construction. I'm afraid that they're also going to be, their root system would be damaged. So even if they weren't removed, they may die. Thank you.
Thank you. City Manager?
One last card. It's Elizabeth Parker.
Sorry, City Clerk?
Elizabeth Parker? No? Okay, bye.
City Manager?
Okay, we are to petitions and requests from the public, non-agenda items.
Thank you, City Manager.
Moving on to item 14, which is 14A&amp;B, the mayor's report and city council's reports.
All right. I'm going to call on somebody else to go first, just because I'm going to get my laptop open with my notes, so, who wants to go first? All right, Vice Mayor Cole?
Well, we had a very nice awards banquet on Saturday night for the fire department, which Mayor Connors and I attended, and on Saturday morning, there's wreaths across, is it wreaths across America?
Wreaths across America, yes.
At the veteran cemetery on Day Street, and I encourage people to come out for that.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Cole. Member Muskoso?
Last night I got to attend the Space Coast League of Cities event, and one of the things I would like to discuss is they talked about HB 1365, which is about not camping in public property. And so, that would be something, I heard what the other cities were doing, they're not doing a lot, the only city that appeared to be doing something was Palm Bay, they have a survey on their website explaining, having people fill out a little bit of information, but they're also holding a workshop, and they're inviting various community leaders, groups, and nonprofits to participate. And so, I mean, I'm a new member, I'm not sure if this has been something that we've discussed of how we're going to move forward, but it is coming, so I think it's something that we need to be thinking about. So I'd like to just propose that we have a time that we talk about it, or if you already have, that maybe I can have some of that information.
Thank you. Member Nelson?
We can certainly provide council the information on that bill, and what's going on, and you can have a discussion. You're talking about the law that we cannot allow the camping on rights of way, and there was, part of that bill also is if the county wanted to have land dedicated for that, they could do that, but that's the county to do, not us. So what the law says is we can't allow it, we can't allow it to happen, we need to do something about it. But certainly, if you want to get more information on that bill and have that discussion, I'd be glad to bring that back to council.
But as a city, do we have to provide a place for, so that's only a county?
Yeah.
Okay. I would like, if possible, just a little bit more information, because I think that is something that's going to impact people here in our community.
Sure, we can provide council a summary of that bill and that law, but right, providing the places if the county chooses to do that, but my understanding is, as of today, the county hasn't taken any action on that.
Okay, thank you.
Just as a suggestion, if we're going to bring that back to council, information on that law, we might want to pair it up with a presentation from our CSU department, and how they're handling that. Our community service unit and the police department?
Right.
Because aren't they the ones out there enforcing the laws?
Well, I think what you're asking for is the law, and, you know, I can certainly provide an update, I think several council members have done ride-alongs with that group.
Thank you, City Manager. All right, Member Nelson?
So I spent the last two weeks recovering, but during my recovery, I saw this information on reef arches, and to me, it was interesting, so I was going to pass it on to the rest of you guys. Reef arches are being used in Palm Bay by the Marine Resources Council. What I thought was interesting is the amount of property that is being added to the shorelines by the reef arches. The wave attenuation devices are supposed to go in by the end of December, and I suspect they will do the same thing, but you're talking about 100 days, and you go from having no beach to having a beach. So I thought that was really interesting. Talked to Sandy Reller a couple minutes before we started, she said she thought this would be cheaper, but that remains to be seen, but this is an idea of what we can do if we're missing property. We're getting serious erosion. And I also sent it to the City Manager. So, people want to look at the website, it's Reef Arches, it's amazing, the amount of property that they're creating.
Thank you, Member Nelson, and now my report. Oh, I got one, I just covered it up in my little book. Yep, Mayor Connors, which is still weird to get used to, but I can probably say, I don't represent just the people that vote for me, I represent all 50,000 people here. And that means working with everybody, whether we agree or disagree. I'm really excited that we had a, I had a two-hour lunch with Laura Lee Thompson, and we talked about the lagoon, what the city's doing, where some of the real pitfalls are in terms of state and federal funding, and I'm really excited about the ideas that we generated to move our city forward, and to be able to represent Titusville on an environmental level to the bigger state agencies. So that's my first update. I want to make a few announcements about events. We have the Christmas parade coming up this Saturday. Last Monday, we had the reverse Christmas parade downtown, where Sheriff Ivy collected toys, the Gift of Light at Parish, which was a hugely successful event, Breakfast with Santa, the 5Ks at Park Avenue. Titusville is really booming, and sometimes it's frustrating when you see online and people say there's nothing to do, or there's no events going on. There's events all over the place, you just gotta, you gotta look a little bit, but I'm really excited about continuing to get the information out there and letting people know what is happening in the city of Titusville. Now, in terms of development review, it seems like, you know, there's all these questions about developments, I'm really glad that Mr. Parish is here, because I was hoping that maybe you could provide some insight, you know, for our next council meeting, as to the times, the lengths of times it takes for each separate length of a review, specifically site, civil engineering review, stormwater review, traffic, landscaping, planning, and the utilities review. I kind of want to see where, you know, the pitfalls are, you know, from a policy standpoint, and see what we can do to help make things smoother, not only for our residents, but for people trying to do the work here. And I know, before I took office, I believe the review times were pretty high, and we had to add extra staff, so I'm trying to figure out what policy-wise we're having trouble with. So, any questions on that? All good?
Sir, are you asking advisability for us to bring you back something?
Yeah.
Okay, so-
Oh, yeah, yeah, can I have a motion for advisability?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion cares, thank you. All righty, my next up is the First City Council meeting I chaired, I talked about my vision and my plans, and I talked about wanting to do a charter review. Mr. Brum, can you please give council direction on forming a charter review committee?
I can certainly come back to you, we don't have a charter review committee, we don't have anything in our code for charter that provides for one. So the first step, if council wants to look at that, is come back and say, well, what would that look like? How would you want to appoint them? What would be their guidance? There's a lot of things that you wouldn't want to consider if you're going to create a charter review committee. So that would be up to council, you know, we can certainly, and what that would look like, and the ordinances put in that place, how many would be on the committee, who would make those appointments? There's a lot of considerations that council will need to look at in deciding whether or not you want to move forward to the charter review committee.
Absolutely, and just so other council members are, know what I'm thinking, I know that the county does a charter review every, how many years do they do it now? Every like six to 10? I don't know exactly.
I would be guessing.
But how they do it and their process is each district member appoints three people to the charter review committee. I think we could probably model something similar off what the county does, and probably have some pretty good success of getting our citizens' input into how they want our government formed and functioned and executed. So, can I have a motion for advisability on a charter review committee, please?
Well, let me ask, when you said motion for advisability on a charter, what are you, you asking for us to come back with something? Because you would have to create that, of course, and we'd have to bring that to you to consider all of those different details associated with it, and I know you'd have one council member missing, of course. So I just want to be clear on what council wants, do you want us to bring back some options, or maybe other charter review committees, how they operate for your consideration? I just want to understand what you're asking.
Yes, absolutely, because, you know, obviously with one member missing and not formulating discussion, I'm not saying we just create the committee out of willy-nilly and fly-by-the-cir pants, so, yes.
Before we do that, I'd like to have the information on how other areas do a charter review committee, so we can see what we're getting into, what we need to do, as opposed to jumping straight into it.
Yeah, that's why I asked for advisability.
Well, advisability is basically bringing it back to us, whereas if we ask for a presentation that gives us more, an idea on what other people are doing, how it's going to, how it might work, and then we can sort of go from there, I would think that would be a little bit better.
Does not matter to me, I just need a motion either way.
Okay, so, I'd like to do the motion for a presentation.
Second.
I have a motion, and I have a second for presentation. Can everybody that, in favor, say aye, please?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion cares. All right, with that being said, thank you, sorry, Mr. Brum, for putting that work on your plate. I also just want to recognize our Titusville Police Department for receiving Excelsior Status, I believe it's called, which, when I was even typing that out, it threw me off, but Excelsior Status, which is an 18-year-long process of just amazing policies, procedures, everything that they do, so kudos to Chief Lau and their team. And that concludes my report, City Manager.
Yes, I have no action items, there's a letter of support for the Cocoa Multimodal Passenger Station that we sent to the Department of Transportation, just for your information, and looking forward to a lot of candy being handed out on Saturday night. And the weather looks pretty good, so hopefully everybody can enjoy it. And as this is your last meeting before the holidays, on behalf of our staff, we wish you all a very happy holidays, and looking forward to a very prosperous and productive New Year. So thanks for all that you're doing and will do here in the future, thank you.
Thank you, City Manager, City Attorney? All right, before we adjourn, I have one more piece of business, which is the office, which apparently is a shared space between mayor and council. Before the previous council, Mayor Tully used it as his office, I want to get your thoughts on whether it should just be the mayor's office or not, so.
I will say, since I've been here, I think, the longest, I don't have a problem with the way it is now. Dan used, Mayor Diesel used the desk a lot to do computer reading. I've used it different times, but other times, I've used the table in there for meetings, and I've never, I don't think I've ever run into anybody, so it seems, to me, it seems to be working.
Okay, any other thoughts? Member Muskoso?
Yeah, I wouldn't, I mean, I don't have the experience, but I do like having an option of having a place to meet with people, so I would like, if possible, to have that room available for council members and the mayor.
I agree with Councilwoman Nelson and Councilwoman McCosso, that it's a viable place for us to go and meet with various people at various times, and we can always talk to the executive secretary and reserve it if we should need it, so that there are no conflicts.
All right, thank you very much, and do I have a motion to adjourn?
Oh, I won't really make that one. I'll say Merry Christmas, let's adjourn.
Merry Christmas, second.
We are adjourned.